Thank you councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I'd clear the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Yes, I move that councillors Griffiths and Johnston be granted a leave of absence for today's meeting.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk that councillors Johnson and Griffiths be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. No further apologies. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,686th meeting held on Tuesday 2nd of August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,686th meeting of council held on the 2nd of August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant here today. I call on Mrs Rita Anwarri who will address the chamber on acknowledging Queensland's new Afghan residents. Bill is showing Mrs Anwarri to her seat. Thank you Mrs Anwarri for coming in. You have five minutes, you can stand or sit depending on your preference and your five minutes starts when the microphone is turned on. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr Chair and Lord Mayor and councillor. Thanks for giving me opportunity to raise my community's voice. My name is Rita Anwarri, I'm the founder, director of Women Empowerment Leadership Association. 2017 Women Empowerment Leadership established for the community, not just only for Australia, for global, all around, around the world, to raise the voice of women without of voice. Especially for the Queensland community, we work continuously to raise the voice of the woman which is ongoing hold and the experience domestic violence. We're working tirelessly to provide support to women and their children's affected by domestic violence and inform the community and help and also we organise workshop to educate them through to education and also job providing job as well. So since last year 2017, sorry, 2021, 15th of August when Afghanistan government's fault, Women Empowerment Leadership with a very small team dedicated their time and their life to help so many Afghan, helped them to come to move to Australia. With a very small of four people team, we managed to get 600 family, not a whole family, to come to Australia and call Australia their home. We have got around the 500 of them in Queensland. We are proud of Australian government, without of their support, we couldn't manage to get these tents. Afghan communities always stand for the democracy which is this land has given us this opportunity for us. Since 19th of August, our team tirelessly working with Afghan new residents in Queensland by settlement without of any budget or any financial support. Most of them is our own community supported for them their budget to help them and settle, especially for the accommodation. My own family, they helped them to accommodate them and also with most of the other families' business, put the money together. We get a small, very small support from Brisbane City Council for 11 event, we're very happy with it, to welcome them in December for new refugees. But from December up to now, we have got around a couple of hundreds of them back in Australia and Brisbane. So the best part of it is how our great Lord Mayor and the 19th of August, they're turning on the light of Afghanistan flag all around of Brisbane to show the respect for Afghan new refugee which is they calling Australia their new home with lots of hope, which is they lost the opportunity in back at home. So the colour of Afghanistan flag will be on proudly, but our small association getting together to throw them a small event, but unfortunately we are out of budget. We kindly asking support financially to welcome those people and tell them Australia is the country respecting multicultural and we are here to hear your voice and show them this beautiful city of Brisbane. What's the beauty and the thing is they, all councillor, doesn't matter which side of the coming, they're all respecting the multicultural. That's our request from Afghan community. Hopefully we get a positive outcome from that.
Thank you Mrs Anwarri, thank you. Councillor Howard, are you responding?
Yes, thank you. Thank you Mr Chair and and thank to you Rita for that wonderful presentation. My name's Vicky Howard, I'm the Civic Cabinet Chair for Community Arts and Nighttime Economy and particularly to answer you in regard to the work that you do in the community and we really appreciate you taking the time to come into the council chamber so that you can talk to all of the councillors. And on behalf of my colleagues, I'd like to thank you and the Afghanistan-Australia Chamber of Commerce and Investment for the important work that you do. And as you know, council proudly provided financial support to the International Women's Day celebration that you helped organise, together with the Women Empowerment and Leadership Association, such wonderful events to support women. It was in fact about one year ago today when Brisbane joined millions of Australians looking on with shock and sadness at the unfolding events in Afghanistan. It was a distressing time for the Afghan people and for our men and women in uniform. As Australians, we have and always will share a deep and lasting connection with the people of Afghanistan. Almost 39,000 Australian Defence Force personnel served in Afghanistan over the last 20 years and 41 Australians lost their lives in the service of our country. The service of our ADF personnel and those of other agencies gave Afghans a chance for a better future, increased access to basic healthcare and electricity, reduced maternal mortality rates, rises in life expectancy and the participation of women in politics and girls attending schools and we know how important that is for people coming to Australia. Australia has not forgotten either the Afghans who supported our troops over the last two decades and Australia's military air evacuation in Afghanistan was one of the largest humanitarian operations in our history. Since 2013, Australia has granted more than 8,500 visas for Afghans under the humanitarian programme and we know how important it is for these new families to feel welcome in our community when they arrive here in Australia and that is why the work that you do is so important. We thank you and the Afghanistan-Australia Chamber of Commerce and Investment for the important work that you do in supporting our new Afghan families making a new home here in Brisbane. Leaving your home is always a difficult task in and of itself and one cannot imagine the heartbreaking struggle that hundreds and thousands of Afghan families have faced in being forced to flee their homeland. So we join you in welcoming them in Brisbane and will offer every possible assistance for your event on the 19th of August. We are proud to have a thriving Afghani community here in Brisbane and because while we have lots of sunny days and good weather and leafy suburbs, they're wonderful things to enjoy. So one of our dedicated officers from councils connected communities will touch base with you very shortly to offer every possible assistance that we can for your event on the 19th and I look forward to continuing to work with you and supporting our Afghan community. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Howard. Thank you Mrs Anwarri for coming in, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, a little while ago, the federal government granted council the funds required to produce a business case for the North West Transport Corridor. Could you please update the chamber on the latest in this body of work?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Landers for the question and very timely and pertinent one. I know that yourself councillor Landers, as well as councillor Davis, councillor Wines, councillor Maddock, councillor Toomey, councillor Hammond and in fact everyone on this side of the chamber is very passionate about making sure that our city has the infrastructure it needs as it grows and we're also concerned about what we see as a black hole for investment from the state government in infrastructure in the northwestern suburbs. Now, many, many decades ago, the state government developed a plan which they called the North West Transport Corridor. They set aside some land and then for decades later they did nothing. That land was intended to be a transport corridor, yet it has disappeared from any infrastructure plans and residents are rightly asking what is going to happen in the northwestern suburbs. The area is growing and there are no plans from the state government coming out and so we in partnership with the federal government have done some planning work to assist in this process because we know it is vital that we get the infrastructure that our growing city needs. And so what I can say today is that we have finalised a $10 million detailed investigation of this corridor and we have looked at all types of transport issues, all types of challenges in the network and we have looked at all modes of travel as well. And what we have identified is a number of things. Firstly, that doing nothing is simply not an option. The northwestern suburbs have been growing rapidly and that doesn't include just the areas in Brisbane, includes areas outside of Brisbane in Moreton Bay region, other surrounding areas and those suburbs are becoming increasingly under pressure from a lack of state government infrastructure investment. We know that right now the cost of congestion in that precinct is $312 million a year, that will rise to over half a billion, in fact $538 million a year just before the Olympics in 2031 and then to $859 million per year in 2041. That is the cost of doing nothing, that is the cost of congestion, that is the cost of people being stuck in traffic, in people being in overcrowded means of transport such as rail services, in people being caught in accidents or having accidents and all the associated range of costs of congestion. So doing nothing is not an option. But we also know that the corridor that was set aside many years ago has a really healthy depth of wildlife and flora and fauna on it. And so our investigation identified that any solutions to transport challenges in that part of the world should be underground, should be underground, not at surface, not using the at-surface corridor, not bulldozing bushland, not putting threatened or endangered species at risk but going underground. And so whether it is train tunnels, whether it is motorway tunnels, whether it is a new bus rapid transport system using for example the metro vehicles up Gimpie Road, we know that there needs to be a tunnel solution involved in the transport challenges. And that's what happens when you leave it too long. That's what happens when you leave it too long. Now, I hear the interjections from the leader of the opposition, from the party that has done nothing for 50 years, for 50 years and now trying to suggest that it will be a toll tunnel. Well, we know, we know that there won't be any roads or any transport if it's left to the Labor Party. We know that they will do nothing. We know that they're quite happy to see the people of the northwestern suburbs sit in traffic, sit in traffic and offer no solutions. And we've heard it again today, the attitude from the opposition says it all, a scare campaign, but we're looking at real solutions. And so where we go next is this report will be submitted to the other two levels of government, the state government, the federal government and to Infrastructure Australia. This report will look at, it looks at a range of different options that can be part of a suite of solutions. This report doesn't identify one single project, it identifies multiple options that can improve the transport infrastructure in the northwestern suburbs. We simply say we have done a lot of great foundational work here, let's now have the chat with the other two levels of government, let's have the chat with Infrastructure Australia and get moving on this critical planning. Thank you Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last month my Labor team and I visited the southside suburb of Polara to discuss with locals the ongoing suburban neglect their community is facing. Now Polara, as you should know, is Brisbane's fastest growing suburb, but their streets are riddled with potholes, they have no curving and channeling in most streets, footpaths either abruptly end or are nowhere to be seen at all and locals are still waiting on those few bus stops you've been promising for years. One local at the meeting asked why the Lord Mayor and their local councillor wouldn't come out and listen to residents. Lord Mayor, why has councillor Angela Owen and your LNP council left this community behind?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I can say that we need, we leave nobody behind in Brisbane and we also don't play political games with people who are in need of support. We know that when councillor Cassidy punched Polara into his GPS because he wouldn't know where on earth it was.
Councillor Strunk please.
We know that he went there for one reason and one reason only, that was to play politics, to play politics. Now, we know, we know that Polara is a rapidly growing suburb which is why it's got the biggest increase in investment of virtually any suburb in Brisbane. We see the two growing areas of Rochedale and Polara having record investment in new infrastructure and that's all kinds of infrastructure, that's parkland, that's drainage, that's roads, that's transport upgrades.
Councillor Strunk please.
And I would like to point out that we have time and time again, through the tenacity and hard work of the local councillor Angela Owen, been fighting for some basic things like bus services out in that area. We have put forward business cases, one after the other, after the other and they have been.
Councillor Cassidy.
And they have been rejected by the Labor state government and we know that.
Councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence.
We know that the Labor state government and the Labor opposition in council only seek to play politics with this issue and it is really quite shameful. And we, we want, we want to make sure that the investment is happening, that's exactly why we're increasing the investment. It's why for example that we had an increase of 106% in the funding allocated to the area in the local government infrastructure plan, our plan to make sure that investment was happening and that included $20 million of stormwater infrastructure, it included 46 million worth of parks and upgrades to parks, it includes, and it includes any bus stops that are necessary to facilitate the state government's delivery of services. We have seen, we have seen time and time again, this do-nothing state government trying to blame council for its own failures and we see this mob to my right doing the same thing. And the people of Polara would be better served by an opposition who didn't just see them as a political point scoring opportunity.
Councillor Strunk.
Their local councillor is a champion for her residents and she has fought for years to make sure that they get basic services like bus services and she will continue to fight because she actually cares about her residents, not seeing them as some, some kind of cheap political point scoring opportunity. And so I think it's really disappointing that, that Labor has only taken an interest in Polara because they see some point scoring opportunities. But we know, we know that there is only one side of politics and one local councillor and that is councillor Owen who deeply cares about the people of Polara and it's our side of politics and our local councillor Angela Owen. And we want to make sure the investment continues to happen and we will not tolerate the party political games, the cynical party political games which seek to use the residents of Polara in need as political pawns in their cynical game. We will not tolerate that. We will keep fighting for them, we will keep investing and we will hold the state government to account for their lack of investment in basic bus services in the area. We have, we have Mr Chair and councillor Murphy knows it, we have ample budget to build new bus stops, we have ample budget to build new bus stops. What we've been waiting for is the state to sign off on actually putting the buses to those bus stops. We have been waiting for years. They, they wanted to neglect the area and then when they were caught out, they've tried to blame Brisbane City Council. And I can tell you, we will not cop it because we care about the people of Polara, we care about the growing area of Zabour City and we will continue investing and fighting for them.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week we learnt that Labor believes a derelict Signals Building on an island 50 kilometres from Brisbane's mainland is an ideal location to house the homeless, along with a range of other council buildings. Can you outline Labor's new policy, how Labor's new policy has been overcooked and compare it to council's current approach?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you Mr Chair and thank you councillor Mackay for the question as it does give me the opportunity to put some rational thought into what is being done to assist in managing the ongoing risks of homelessness in our city, given the current demands for rental accommodation across our suburbs. Now, I'm not sure if I would call the new policy councillor Cook outlined in question time last week as overcooked or undercooked, but it certainly goes to show that the Labor opposition cannot be trusted to come up with a feasible solution to dealing with homelessness in our city. To refresh everyone's memory, councillor Cook referenced 19 properties owned by Brisbane City Council that are vacant and unused and asked the Lord Mayor, which of these facilities have you offered to housing providers or homelessness support organisations like Bed Down to address these issues? Labor's new policy for every vacant community facility building being offered as a homeless shelter has clearly been dreamt up by someone with no idea of some of the challenges being faced by the homeless in our city and the organisations who support them. Let's take a look at some of the most unworkable suggestions which show how Labor's new approach demonstrates they are more interested in headlines than helping the homeless. The Signals Building at Moreton Island, which councillor Mackay referenced in his question, was built around 1930. It's clad in asbestos cement sheeting and due to currently undergoing termite treatment is not suitable for habitation at present. This is without mentioning the fact that aside from what I've already mentioned, the building is located 50 kilometres offshore on Moreton Island. The old electricity substation site at Victoria Park, which has no toilets or any water or sewerage connections, is somehow now a perfectly suitable site to address homelessness issues in our city. Another location that Labor believe would be suitable would be 16 Garfield Drive, Barden. Regrettably, it appears that Labor have failed to recognise that 16 Garfield Street, Barden, is the location of the Paddington Water Tower. For your information, it is no longer in use but remains due to heritage reasons. Also on this list are a large range of community facility buildings which have just received upgrades to enable them to be leased to community organisations. So many of them have been construction sites recently and are in the process of being offered to community organisations. The reality is that most of the support services that are provided to the city's homeless and most importantly the support services that help get them into sustainable housing are located in the CBD or inner city areas. Most of these 19 properties are located in outer suburb areas, including a building in Richlands which is about to have a new lease awarded for local supporting, local sporting groups. Labor's suggestion to move the homeless to the outer suburbs where these support services are not located would present challenges to providing vulnerable persons with the wraparound support services required to address homelessness. There are a couple of unusual vacant sites on the list too, Cathedral Square Coffee Cart Building, the cafe space in the square near Pig and Whistle, a grand total of 12 square metres. These sites are clearly not locations that you could feasibly set up homeless shelters. But Mr Chair, I've saved the worst for last, the Witten Barracks. Now this is an historic site which is currently under refurbishment, so it's actually a construction site, but I'm not sure that the Labor councillors think what they were thinking when they put this one up. Three of the four enclosed buildings on site are actually cell blocks, jail cells, bars on the windows. Under Labor's approach, as we would, we would be shipping homeless into former jail cells in Witten Barracks. It defies logic that such a suggestion would be even made without considering these sites. I think most people would be horrified to think that a city would encourage their homeless to occupy former jail cells. Well luckily, Mr Chair, the Labor councillors are not running the city and this administration has a plan to prevent people from slipping into homelessness through a range of programmes where we work constructively with organisations to deliver outcomes, all while the state government has been asleep at the wheel on delivering enough accommodation for our city's most vulnerable. We only need to look at the report this week where it was revealed that state government owned housing was being left vacant with 658 government managed sites without tenants at the end of July. What's more, the councillor seems to be assessed with the council having nine vacant, 19 vacant sites not fit for purpose, but.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Sri.
Thanks Jeff. My question's to the mayor and it's, it's similar to a question I asked about a year ago, but I wanted to know if the answer had changed at all. Lord Mayor, there's been a lot of commentary and debate and a little bit of mudslinging around homelessness and housing affordability policies, but at the end of the day, I think a fundamental and underlying question is how can we make housing cheaper for people who need it and whether we want housing in the private sector to get cheaper. So I want to be clear that I'm not talking about public housing here, I'm talking specifically about private housing. Would you, Lord Mayor, like to see house prices increase or roughly stay the same or fall and get cheaper? Do you want housing in this city to get cheaper?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Sri. Well, when it comes to the issue of affordability, we know that it's not the house price alone which makes something affordable or not. It's, it's people's ability to actually get into the properties based on factors such as the availability of supply. You know, the, the houses may or may not be affordable, but if there's nothing available, you won't be able to get into it. It also depends on incomes and how incomes have changed over time, it depends on a whole range of things. So the house price alone is not the only factor when it comes to affordability. And so I have talked previously on this issue as councillor Sri has and it's important to remember that for many people in Brisbane who currently either own a home or have a mortgage, their house is their number one investment, is their biggest investment that they'll ever make in their life. And so when councillor Sri or someone like councillor Sri in the Greens suggests that houses should get cheaper, what they are saying is that they are quite happy.
Point of order to you councillor Strang and Adam, my apologies for that earlier.
You're right. Just the, the question was pretty straightforward is, does the mayor want to see house prices get cheaper? And I'm wondering if the mayor can give a direct answer to the question.
The point of order is very relevant, Lord Mayor, to the question.
So as I was very clearly explaining, this is not, this is not a question that comes on to the issue of house prices only, but we must bear in mind that this is what we are talking about for many people in Brisbane, their number one investment. It is the biggest thing they'll ever own, the most important thing they'll ever own and I wouldn't wish on anyone that someone's investment would decrease in value. I wouldn't wish that on anyone. Now we know that investments do rise and fall and whether it is a house or whether it is some kind of other investment that they are subject to ups and downs, they are subject to market forces, but I wouldn't wish on to anyone that their investment would decline in value.
He's really dancing around the question here, does he want house prices to increase or stay the same or get cheaper? It's a very simple question. What does he want as the mayor of the city?
I believe the Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question.
I'm simply pointing out that house prices alone do not equal housing affordability.
That's right.
And councillor Sri, councillor Sri wants to simplify this as some kind of binary choice. as some kind of binary choice between one option or another or another. And I have heard him in the past rail against binary choices, have you not, Counselor Murphy? He doesn't like binary choices because things are complicated. Things are complicated and this is a complicated issue. I was simply pointing out that I would not like Brisbane residents to see their major investment or asset decline in value, because I wouldn't wish that on anyone. I wouldn't wish that on anyone. But, we know that one of the ingredients in housing affordability is housing supply. And that's where we have an important role to support housing supply and growth in...
Point of order to you, Counselor Strang and Adam.
This is a wonderful essay, but I deliberately asked a very specific question. And the mayor can talk about supply if he wants, but at the end of the day, the point of increasing supplies, I presume, to make housing cheaper. So, I want a direct answer to the question. Does the mayor want housing to get cheaper?
Counselor, the number of the question is about housing affordability, the Lord Mayor is answering that question.
So, to answer the question, to answer the question very simply, I want to see housing affordability improve, not reduce. I want to see housing affordability improve, not decrease. But by the same token, house prices are not the only factor in housing affordability. So, don't try and simplify it into that simple thing about whether I want to see house prices decrease or not. I don't want to see people's major investment decrease in value. I don't want to. But I do want to see housing affordability increase and improve. And the way that we can have a role in doing that is by making sure that there is appropriate supply for a growing city. I think that's a very reasonable response. It may not be a response that impresses an anarchist, it may not be a response that impresses the Greens, but we know that they offer fake solutions to very complex problems. Even Terry Butler made that point just recently. They offer fake solutions, simple, easy-to-digest things where, guess what, everyone? Everything can be free. Everything can be free. We'll build millions of houses across the country. We don't know who will pay for it, but it's all free. This is a utopia that doesn't exist. This is...
Point of order to you, Counselor Strang and Adam.
I've been so patient. I've heard the mayor's long and detailed preamble explanation, but I want him on the record very clearly saying whether he wants houses to get cheaper or not. If he's not, if he's too scared to say that correctly, then clearly he should just say that. But, does he want houses to say the same?
Thank you, Counselor. You're now debating your point of order. And, Lord Mayor, you have a few seconds to respond.
I have answered this question and he may, he may not like the answer, but I've answered the question in very much detail and with accuracy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Your time has expired. Further questions? Counselor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Game Committee, Counselor Adams. Deputy Mayor, this week, 40 years ago, the Queen's Street Mall as we know it was officially opened. Can you please take the chamber for a trip down memory lane and outline what we have in store to celebrate this exciting milestone?
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I'm sure Counselor Cumming is groaning because like I do, I am going to take Counselor Atwood through memory lane because she wasn't here in 1982, which is quite fine. But it was a very big time because it did actually forever change the face of Brisbane's CBD and becoming the heart of the city. And as I often call it, the city heart now, rather than the central business district, is what we've seen over the last couple of years. And it was an absolute historic moment. Some of you here, Mr Chair, not pointing to anyone in particular, will remember in 1982 that the Eye of the Tiger was number one on the music charts. Shoulder pads were definitely the fashion of choice, whether they were in your t-shirt or your jacket, if I remember correctly. And there were plenty of workers that were pounding the pavement to get into work in their office in the city. But most importantly, we were preparing for the 1982 Commonwealth Games and for a visit by the Queen herself for the Commonwealth Games, which, I have to say, 1982 was nothing short of transformational for our city. For that short couple of weeks that we had Matilda winking at us right through to the closing of the ceremony that we just witnessed last night in Birmingham as well, it made a huge difference in Brisbane. It was the first time that Brisbane considered that, hey, we can do this and we are on the world stage. Even at that stage, it was just the Commonwealth world stage. But if you're too young to remember the change, there is a lot of fond memory stories and experiences of the Queen's Street Mall that I can share with you. In those days, it was coffee dates at Jimmy's on the mall. It was definitely watching people from Jojo's while you chose from the courtyard of foods that you could pick from. There was a slightly terrifying rollercoaster, not so much terrifying rollercoaster, but terrifying sounds if you're in the Maya Centre, that I think the Lord Mayor reminisced today that he loves in his fond memory of someone a little younger than me on the rollercoaster in the Maya. There was absolutely nowhere else to meet but Hungry Jack's because no one had a mobile phone or any other form of contact except something that was stuck to a wall. So, once you left for school in the morning, there was no contacting anyone other than see you Friday afternoon outside Hungry Jack's. I think something that hasn't really changed too much over the years is that they still meet at Hungry Jack's. But, it has been reinvented many times over, shopping, dining, office workers, in, out, revitalisations, Winter Garden, Maya Centre, Burnett Lane, the extension of the mall down Albert Street. But the one thing we know, it has remained the most popular mall in the southern hemisphere. Definitely the most successful in Australia. It has stood the test of time. When so many malls overseas were being introduced at the same times, many of them have been reopened again because they just didn't work. And as I've said many times in this chamber, it's something that we have struggled with during COVID to get the pedestrians back into the Queen's Street Mall as well. But, we would not be the place we are today without the Queen's Street Mall. It anchors our central business district. It is our premier retail and dining and will remain that way even as Queen's Wharf comes online, which will have different offerings. It is still about bringing tourists to the city and them experiencing our wonderful Queen's Street Mall. It is home to more than 500 retailers, including six major shopping centres. There is a lot of beautiful history if you just look up to the heritage of the buildings that there as well. There is definitely some more modern retailers than there in the old days. Some of the, some of my colleagues will be able to nod and remember, Sports Girl was much bigger than it is now. And Cherry Lane was actually the place that you shopped, not Sports Girl, just quietly. But there was a lot of these things that have come and gone, but what has not come and gone is the attraction that we have for our beautiful open-air mall as well. Getting there is definitely going to be easier over the next coming years with the new Brisbane Metro through Adelaide Street, the Cross River Rail, through Albert Street, the Kangaroo Point, Green Bridge, all of those making it a all-roads-leading home to the Queen's Street Mall as well. So, today, actually today, the 9th of August, is our 40th birthday for the Queen's Street Mall. It is going to be decked out from this weekend for two weeks in nostalgic storytelling, exhibits, activations and entertainment. And it wouldn't be a birthday without a party. And we've got some big plans for a celebratory street party on the 26th of August, which I am going to hold the headline acts to later in the month as well. But please, share with your community's councillors that is the time now to come in and come down memory lane that will be Queen's Street Mall in the next couple of weeks. Pop-up champagne bars at Reddick Cliff Place, late-night shopping, fashion workshop, runway shows. It will all be happening here in town. And of course, we're doing that with Rediscover Brisbane. We are trying to make sure we're supporting our small businesses in every way we possibly can. Happy birthday, Queen's Street Mall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I called the file on your LMP administration's bus review and I noted there are 20 routes you are planning to reduce or cut entirely, including out in the much-neglected Calumvale Ward. Lord Mayor, can you guarantee today that no commuters will be worse off?
Lord Mayor.
Well, well, well. I wonder if he's called the file on the train network review that's currently underway. And I wonder if he's going to say anything about that because we see massive changes coming to the rail network. They will, no doubt, they will be quiet, they will, they will not say a word about changes in the train network. Why? Because Labour's doing it.
Could you bring the Lord Mayor back to the question, please? The debate wasn't about train schedules or train type levels or anything?
Thank you, Counselor Strunk. The Lord Mayor was 25 seconds into these answers. I'm sure he'll respond entirely to the question I was asked.
Mr Chair, I've discovered that it doesn't actually matter what I say in response to a question because Labour councillors don't listen and they don't want to hear it. So, they, they simply want to be able to tick a box that they've asked the question and that's it, that's it. So, let's go into the detail of this issue. Now, we know that there are two critical changes coming to our bus and rail network, our transport network in South East Queensland, and that is Brisbane Metro and Cross River Rail. Now, both of those changes require modifications to the network. And in fact, both of those projects are facilitating reductions in bottlenecks in the network. And so, Cross River Rail is reducing the bottleneck through the Maryvale Street Train Bridge and the South Brisbane route on the train line. So, it's, it's taking away the bottleneck there and it's diverting the trains through another route, that is, through the Cross River Rail Tunnel under Adelaide Street and through De Roma Street. And so, that will necessitate changes in the network. By the same token, Brisbane Metro is about removing the inner-city bottlenecks in the busway network to free up capacity so that we can carry more people without them getting stuck in a bus jam. Now, we've heard various solutions that, well, so-called solutions that Labour has put up. Their solution, the latest solution is that they should, we should simply just put more diesel-articulated buses onto an already congested busway network. That is their genius plan. That is their genius plan to deal with challenges in the bus network. Now, we're taking a much more serious and grown-up approach to the network because we know that two-thirds of all transport trips are taken on the bus network. And so, our plan is very simple. We will come forward and we will consult with the people of Brisbane over the coming 12 months to develop a new network for Brisbane. And we will do that in consultation with the community. We will do that also with a commitment that our plan is to put extra money and extra investment on the table to make sure services are improved. And what that means is that we will see over the coming four years, our subsidy of bus services go from 99 million to 183 million. 99 million to 183 million. That is almost an 84% increase in the funding that our administration is putting in to bus services. Now, let me predict that Labour will take the lazy and the easy route and they'll carry on about some kind of cuts to transport services. We are increasing funding. We are not reducing funding. We are increasing funding. And unlike other bus network reviews in the past where the priority appeared to be cost savings, our priority is actually to get more bottoms-on-seats. Our priority is to get more investment in the network, not less. And so, if Counselor Cassidy thinks that we can somehow guarantee there'll be no changes to the network in the network review, then he's missed the point of a network review. The whole point of a review is that there will be some changes.
Yeah, the Lord Mayor, I've been listening along, has clearly misunderstood in what he just said then, misunderstood what my question was. I was seeking a guarantee that no commuters will be worse off. Of course, there will be changes, but my question to the Lord Mayor is whether any commuters will be worse off as a result of this bus review.
Lord Mayor, if you have the floor, the answer is about the bus review.
Well, I can assure Counselor Cassidy, all councils and the people of Brisbane, that the Brisbane Transport Network will be better off under this review. Will be better off because it will get more investment and more services coming online and more frequency.
Point of order to you, Counselor Cassidy.
This is the, what is the classic definition of spin? The question was about commuters being worse off. Can the Lord Mayor guarantee whether any commuters will be worse off as a result of this review?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, to the question of guarantee.
How can I predict the outcome of a review that has 12 months to run and is only just gearing up? How can I predict what will happen in 12 months' time? Because our, our intention is to invest more into the network and to put more services on, and in fact, 84% more. 84% more investment in the bus network. That's what our intention is, that's what our plan is. Yet, what we see, yet again, is a simplistic approach from the Labour Party where they seek to oppose and to scare people unnecessarily.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Your time has expired. Further questions? Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise to ask a question to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, testing on the Brisbane Metro pilot vehicle is well underway and passing with flying colours. Could you please update the chamber on the latest news in the Shrinna Council's Brisbane Metros project?
Counselor Murphy.
I can, and thank you, Counselor Owen, for the question because as we know, Mr Chair, one of the most exciting aspects of the Brisbane Metro project is the bus itself. Our vision is to deliver a world-class transport system for Brisbane. And really, this is what Brisbane Metro will bring to our city. No other city in the southern hemisphere is using these advanced battery electric buses. We will be the first. Now, I mentioned in this chamber before that the Metro is based on the best international technology. We went through a very lengthy design process to customise this vehicle for our standards and requirements. And, Mr Chair, what we have created is the best bus in the world, bar none. The Lord Mayor has previously called this the Tesla of public transport, but it's also the Bugatti of buses, or, as someone called it yesterday on LinkedIn, a tram on tyres. As the first bus of its type in Australia, it's received a lot of attention as it's driven around Brisbane in the past few months. And, Mr Chair, it doesn't just look good, it has performed extremely well and it has exceeded all of our wildest expectations in terms of performance. So, as the Lord Mayor announced yesterday, we have now officially placed an order for another 59 vehicles with HES and Volvo, which will complete our initial fleet. This is yet another milestone for Brisbane Metro, which means we will soon have 60 of the most advanced electric vehicles delivering turn-up-and-go transport right here in Brisbane. In fact, Brisbane's deployment will be the largest deployment of HES Light Tram 25 anywhere in the world. And a fleet of this size will allow us to run services along Metro 1 and 2 every five minutes and all 24 hours on the weekend. Now, one of the greatest benefits of Brisbane Metro is that it gives us the capacity to move an additional 30.4 million passengers per year on the South East busway. We know that high-capacity articulated buses are already a great asset to our fleet. We have 70 of them in our regular fleet and now we're purchasing even more. But without Metro's mega-buses, our infrastructure build and the network review that the Lord Mayor has just been talking about, there is no opportunity to increase capacity in our network. In the last three months, the pilot Metro has been through a testing programme that has been extremely rigorous. It has passed 1,157 individual requirements. We have tested manoeuvrability, we have tested accessibility, we have tested energy consumption and passenger experience. And in this time, Chair, the Metro has travelled over seven, sorry, over 6,000 kilometres. Our team of Metro drivers has taken the vehicle along busways, over the Gayway Bridge, up Mount Cotton and down Mount Coother, into the quarry itself, doing grade testing. Our accessibility working group has also been on board to ensure that the vehicle offers a best-travel experience for residents of all abilities. And I saw some people telling the news channels last night about how that vehicle changed their experience of being able to walk up and push a button and not have someone help them get on a bus, that life-changing, step-changing quality for public transport. We, we know it's very exciting to have had our pilot vehicle here for testing. I know many residents have caught glimpses of it as it's been out and about around Brisbane. And now that we're satisfied with the vehicle's performance, we have given it a break from its rigorous testing regime. But the Metro will still be out and about. Residents will have an opportunity to check the vehicle out for themselves and since Saturday, it has been on display at the ECA, giving residents their first chance to jump on the most advanced bus in the world. And over the weekend, we have had more than 4,000 people through the Metro at the ECA and I know that number will continue to climb over the next week. Mr Chair, this Shrinna Council already knew that the Metro was a game-changer, but it's been so great to see that Brisbane residents actually agree with us. They all agree with us. They have told us that they love the size of the vehicle, that they love the modern look of the vehicle, which has been so disparaged in this chamber by those opposite. They love that it's electric and that it's flexible and it doesn't require expensive, laid tracks. And on the inside, the feedback is that the seats are more comfortable, that the mobility bays are well-sized and that there's plenty of onboard tech to keep residents occupied. Wifi, USB charging points, programmable LED lighting, onboard trip announcements. Mr Chair, need I go on? One of my favourite comments from the weekend, Mr Chair, is that this is exactly what Brisbane needs and we on this chamber, we on this side of the chamber couldn't agree more. I'd like to thank the members of the Metro Project team who are manning the vehicle and telling the public all about this very impressive new addition to our public transport fleet, as well as the team who worked very hard throughout the testing schedule. fleet, as well as the team who worked very hard throughout the testing schedule.
Thanks, councillor Murphy. Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane residents have been hit with the biggest rates rise in a decade on your watch. Many families are still reeling from the devastation of the February floods and there is a cost of living and housing crisis that your administration makes a mockery of, as we have heard here today. Our suburbs have been woefully neglected by you and this LMP Council for almost two decades, including cancelling public transport like the Norman Park Ferry, failing to put in basic infrastructure like bus stops in Polara, and bulldozing public community facilities like the former East Brisbane Bowls Club. Instead of addressing these critical and important issues, in recent weeks, you have instead decided to put your time and energy into promoting things like flying taxis and the privatisation of public transport. Lord Mayor, why are you so out of touch with the realities facing everyday residents in our city?
Lord Mayor.
I think the only person that's out of touch would be the one that asked that question, which was just an absolute fabrication and a fantasy and entirely manufactured out of nothing. I'm not sure who's been talking about the privatisation of public transport, but it certainly is not me. We've been talking about investing more, more into public transport, as I just said then. But as I pointed out already in this meeting, Labour councillors don't listen to any of the answers. They ask the questions, but they don't actually listen to the answers and they're not interested in having a genuine debate. They're just interested in cheap political point-scoring. And so I'm not sure what the question was because it was really just some kind of political statement, but I would simply say that someone that would ask a question like that is quite clearly out of touch.
Thank you. That ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, 1st of August 2022, please.
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 1st of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 1st of August 2022, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I always do, I wanted to briefly mention the important community events and causes that are happening this week, which we're supporting, including last night where the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place was lit up in pink and purple to support National EOS Awareness Week. And that stands for E O Sinoh Philic Disease. And these diseases are caused when a person has an excessive amount of white blood cells in the body, which leads to inflammation. And so we've lit up the assets last night in support of that National EOS Awareness Week. Both tonight and tomorrow night, the Story Bridge will be lit up green for the ECHA. But I have to say, given the news that we all heard this morning with great sadness about the passing of Olivia Newton-John, it's important to note that Olivia Newton-John's charity or cause of choice was Cancer Wellness and Research Centre, which also uses green as its official colour. So Olivia Newton-John's passing is incredibly sad for generations of people, not only in Australia or Brisbane, but all around the world, who loved her music, her movies and admired the way that she was a trailblazer in so many areas. And I know that when people do look at the Story Bridge tonight and they see the green, they will not only be thinking about the ECHA, they will be thinking about Olivia Newton-John and the cause that was very important to her, Cancer Wellness and Research Centre. So I thought it was important to make that mention today. On Thursday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in blue and white to celebrate the centenary of the Queensland Country Women's Association. And it was a great honour just today to have a civic reception here for the wonderful members of the Queensland Country Women's Association, both in Brisbane and right across the state. And it's interesting to note that it was this Thursday, 100 years ago, that the Queensland Country Women's Association was formed. It was formed in a building just across the road from where we are now. Everyone is aware of the United Church on Albert Street, which is one of the most sought-after places to get married in the city and you got married there. But right next to that building, there used to be a hall and it was called Albert Hall. It's now the site of the old SGIO building. And that hall existed before City Hall and it was a great meeting place. And this building was only built in 1930, it was finished in 1930. So eight years before, there was a meeting in the United Church Hall, Albert Hall, to form the Country Women's Association for Queensland. The reason it was held this week, 100 years ago, can anyone guess? It's because the ECHA was on this week, 100 years ago. And it meant that people from all around Queensland were here in Brisbane and it was the ideal time to get together to form the Country Women's Association. So they used the opportunity to get together what has been a remarkable organisation that has contributed so much to our community. And one of the important things to note is that while the Country Women's Association formed in different times to what we have today, its key role in promoting friendship and connectedness in our community and support for those less fortunate is still as relevant today as it was 100 years ago. And so we've seen that the Country Women's Association has helped families in Queensland, particularly in regional and remote Queensland, deal with all types of challenges, whether it is the challenge of the Great Depression, which came not too long after the association was formed, to the Second World War, which then followed in another approximately a decade, to the countless droughts, floods and fires that have impacted on communities across Queensland. The CWA has been there to support our community and it's just a fantastic role that they perform. And if anyone asks you whether they are still relevant today, you know what the response is, absolutely, because one of the number-one challenges in our community is social isolation and a lack of connectedness. And so they help provide that critical connectedness in our community, particularly in those remote and regional communities. So congratulations to the Country Women's Association for 100 years, an amazing achievement, but I know that they are going strong and they will provide that important connectedness and support going forward. On Saturday night, Radcliffe Place, Victoria Bridge and the Story Bridge will be lit up in blue and purple to support the You Choose Youth Road Safety Day or Live For List. And Live For List is a day to commemorate the anniversary of the tragic loss of 17-year-old Brisbane girl Alyssa Posel, who died in a tragic road accident just a year ago. And so we're supporting that event, obviously, and also in support of road safety in our community. Just wanted to mention a couple of other things as well. Firstly, it was a great honour last week to be presented with an honorary life membership of the Australian National Flag Association. The National Flag Association, I've been a member of for many, many years. I think it was either the late 1990s or the early 2000s I joined, but it was a great honour to be presented with that honorary life membership. I'm just putting it out there, I love our flag. I absolutely love our flag. And I know it has its detractors. I know there are people who want to change it. I am not one of those people. I love our flag, I support our flag, and my membership of that organisation is all about reminding people that this was the world's first flag that was chosen by the people of a nation. It was chosen by the people of a nation. And so it was a groundbreaking process where in a national competition, so many people had the opportunity to put in submissions and nominations and there were thousands of them. And the winning design, which we have had for over 100 years, is one that was actually come to or designed by five different submissions coming in. So there were five different people putting submissions with that design. And it is a flag that I will always be proud of and I'll always defend and I'll always resist any efforts to change. So, look, that might be funny to some councillors, but I do not, I do not see...
Councillor Cook, please.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, councillor Cook has just said that is the hill that I'm apparently going to die on. Well, I do love this flag that represents our nation and I am passionate about it and she might think that is funny, but I do not. I know maybe she has more of a view that is aligned to Adam Bant and the Greens, or maybe councillor Sri Ranganathan, maybe. But I love the flag and I am not ashamed of that and I will not apologise for loving this flag. And any attempts to use the flag to divide our community are disgraceful, Mr. Chair. On the weekend, it was wonderful to go and visit the Corinda Horse and Pony Club, who suffered significant flood damage in the recent floods. They are an amazing organisation and one that has not only experienced the 2011 flood and now the 2022 flood, but the nature of where they are located means that they have been flooded usually about once a year. Once a year. Pretty much every year they are flooded in some way. And they are, you know, realistic about that challenge because they are in that Oxley Creek catchment, they are in a low-lying area, but they also see the other side of the coin where the fact that it is an area that floods means that they have a lot of land to use for pony club purposes in the 364 days a year that it doesn't flood. And they are a resilient bunch of people and one that we've been proud to support. We recently supported them through the Rebuild and Recover Club Partnerships Programme and we also provided them with some clean-up assistance as well immediately after the flood. They've been doing some great things using that funding and other funding that they've raised to make their facilities more resilient. And they were very proud of the new lighting facility that they put in, which is designed to have all of the electrics above the flood level. And so despite the recent flood, their lighting is all still fully functioning because they planned to invest in a more resilient way. So well done to the Corinda Horse and Pony Club members who do a great job.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Motion for an extension, seconded.
Motion for an extension of time has been moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was also great on the weekend to join a number of my colleagues, in particular councillor Marks, councillor Owen and councillor Huang, at the Rotary Multicultural Festival that was held at the Macrobat Showgrounds. It was the culmination of efforts of two rotary clubs on the south side of Brisbane, in particular Sunnybank and Sunnybank Hills, to put on a great community festival for local residents. And I want to thank all of the people involved in making that event possible. It was a great outcome and one that obviously we'll continue to support. I also want to table, Billy, if you're available, the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation Financial Statements and Directors Report for the year that's just recently ended. Billy? I'm pleased to say that this particular report, CBIC was able to achieve its best operating result and profit ever in the history of the organisation. And so that is a fantastic outcome. And why do we like it when CBIC does well? Because all of the dividends that come from CBIC go back to supporting green space and parkland in our city. It goes back into our Green Future Fund. And so it is a fund which is managed really effectively to generate returns for the people of Brisbane and those returns go straight into parkland and green space. And so a fantastic outcome there. And I would point out that there's other government-owned funds or sovereign funds or urban wealth funds that generate money like this, but not all of them go back into parkland and green space. And so this is quite a unique one and one that we should all be very proud of and one that we should all support. Item A on the agenda in front of us is the exemption to the assignment of the Garden City Bus Interchange Lease from the council to the Department of Transport and Main Roads. And so for those who know the history here, many of the transport interchanges and major bus stations around Brisbane were previously controlled and operated by Brisbane City Council, but with the formation of Translink in the early to mid 2000s, they have progressively been taken over and operated by Translink, which I think is the right and sensible thing to do. But this is the case where the lease of this facility was originally with Brisbane City Council, it's now transferring over to Transport and Main Roads. And that is a good outcome and one that we support. And so people can be assured of continued service at this location and that simply the background lease will be changed to reflect that Transport and Main Roads now operates the major bus interchanges. I would point out that this refers to the Garden City Bus Interchange Lease and not the Macrobat Bus Interchange Lease, and that there was some, there was some discussion today that the name of Garden City has been changed to Westfield, Macrobat. I find that very perplexing, but this one says Garden City Bus Interchange Lease. Item B relates to overseas travel and a submission for the Deputy Mayor to lead a business mission to Daejeon and also to Seoul, both of them in South Korea. They involve the Deputy Mayor attending the Olympic Legacy Forum in South Korea, as well as a range of meetings and business engagements, as well as attending the urban, sorry, the International Urban and Regional Cooperation Event, the World Union of Olympic Cities, and also other Olympic Games host cities meetings as well in Europe. Recently, we marked the 20th anniversary of the sister-city relationship with Brisbane and Daejeon. In fact, we spoke about this last meeting with a motion of special appreciation. And as Lord Mayor, I have not had the opportunity to visit Daejeon. Councillors would be aware that we have nine sister cities and it is important from time to time that we boost and encourage those relationships by visits between cities. We recently had representatives from the Daejeon Education Office out here and I was pleased to meet with them, but I have not had the opportunity. So I've asked the Deputy Mayor to please go to Daejeon on my behalf and on behalf of council to further strengthen that relationship with the Brisbane City Council and that sister-city relationship, but also to not waste an opportunity to talk about Olympic legacy and how we can maximise the opportunities from the Olympics to benefit our city and the people of Brisbane and deliver an amazing legacy outcome. And there's been a lot of discussion about how we might do that, but I think one of the best places to start is by asking and engaging directly with former Olympic cities on how they did it and what they learnt. And that is one of the other important things that the Deputy Mayor will be doing as part of her travel. We know that Seoul is hosting an Olympic Legacy Forum and the Deputy Mayor will be part of that, and that is in association and with participation of the IOC. And we also know that it is important to engage on that city level. Now, this is not about in any way overriding or undercutting the role of the OCOG. The OCOG has a very particular role and that role is very important, but this is about making sure that as a city, that we capitalise on those opportunities, that we deliver the best possible legacy. And I think one thing that we can see just today, where there was a great legacy outcome from a major event, is the Queen's Street Mall. Many people have forgotten that the Queen's Street Mall was created to coincide with the 1982 Commonwealth Games that were held here in Brisbane. The Queen's Street Mall, 40 years later, is a legacy of that major event. South Bank is a legacy of Expo 88. And there will be so many amazing legacies to come out of the Olympic opportunity and Paralympic opportunity. And I want to make sure that we learn from other cities that have done this. We learn what not to do, we learn what to do, we learn the lessons that are there to be learnt so we can maximise the opportunity. And so the Deputy Mayor's travel will be about achieving multiple things. And I would also point out that we have, we have put a real big effort into making sure that the cost of this travel comes down and there are components of this... And there are components of this travel that are being funded by other organisations. So the visiting cities are contributing towards the cost of travel and the hosting. So we've, we've worked really hard to make sure this is as affordable as possible, given the importance of the travel that we're engaging. And also that in one visit or one trip, that we're doing as much as possible and covering as much ground as possible on, on important topics. I mentioned the Seoul Olympic Legacy Forum, which is hosted by the Korea Sports Promotion Foundation and supported by the IOC. In attendance at the forum will be representatives from the IOC, including President Thomas Bark, as well as the UN Secretary-General Ban Ki-moon, as well as other Olympic legacy entities and future Olympic cities and organising committees as well. So, following this particular event, the World Union of Olympic Cities will hold their 2022 annual meeting in Lausanne, which will be the first meeting since we became a member of this organisation. And I've also asked the deputy mayor to represent our city at that meeting. So I commend this particular item to the chamber. Item C is the updated travel policy. The travel policy has not been modified or updated in quite a significant amount of time. And during that time, a number of things have changed. We have seen, first of all, Brisbane become a host city for the Paralympic and Olympic Games in 2032. A role which we acknowledge and understand involves international relations and international relationships. We must not forget that. It is an important part of being an Olympic host city. We need to get this right. The eyes of the world will be watching Brisbane. We need to get this right. And so there will be travel associated with being the host city of the Olympic and Paralympic Games. But also there's some other things that have changed as well since our travel policy was last updated. One of those things, and it's a relatively minor thing, but one that needs to be adjusted, is the, the rise of rideshare opportunities. And so giving people the choice on using rideshare in getting around as opposed to simply just cabs is one of those opportunities. But we have used this opportunity to update the travel policy. The other thing I would point out is that there is no travel that happens in this organisation by councillors that is ever secret. There's no secretive travel. And in fact, the travel records for any councillor travelling can be accessed by any councillor.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Motion for an extension, seconded.
We have a motion for an extension of time for the Lord Mayor, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Now, for example, when a travel arrangement is approved by Civic Cabinet or ENC, 10 days later, the documents are provided and the decisions of ENC are provided and, and all councillors can access them. So very quickly. And this, this compares to a situation, for example, in state and federal government where cabinet decisions are secret for anywhere up to 30 years. 10 days later, our decisions are made public. So there is no such thing as travel not being scrutinised in this place. And I've also made it very clear to my colleagues as well that the travel that is done must have a specific purpose and must be justifiable. It must be about supporting the aims of our city and benefiting the city of Brisbane, learning from the experiences of other city and building up relationships. And so, you know, we are not like other levels of government where they go on study tours. If we travel somewhere, there needs to be outcomes, there needs to be benefits for the people of Brisbane. But obviously, as an Olympic city, there will be travel associated with this role. Engaging with our sister cities, there will be travel associated. And also, another change that I need to mention as well that has been made is I recently visited Perth for the Capital City, Capital City Lord Mayor's meeting. And it struck me as interesting that a five-hour flight to Perth was, was not classed in the same way as a two-and-a-half-hour trip to Auckland, one of our sister cities. It's actually, it's quicker and easier and cheaper to get to Auckland than it is to go to Perth. And so we're making the adjustment now to make sure that travel to New Zealand is classed as domestic travel and approved in the same way. Because Auckland, as our sister city, we have very important things that we need to share and learn from each other. And with just a two-to-three-hour flight, there is an opportunity to make sure that we take advantage of that relation. What was that?
Something about councillor Ox. I love Australia.
So I commend item C, the updated travel policy, to the chamber. Item D is the guarantee policy. The corporate rules and policies require regular reviews and updates to ensure council's processes are aligned with best or current best practice. The guarantee policy describes how guarantees are used to provide council with compensation for risks in the event that one party fails to deliver or to perform on contractual obligations. So this is a necessary part of any contract or arrangement that we enter into. There are no major changes that have been made to this policy. And any changes that have been made are limited to relatively minor housekeeping updates to reflect contemporary practice. I commend these items to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd like to speak on these items and just ask that item B be taken seriously, Adam, for voting.
Item?
B.
B for voting?
Just for voting, yeah. Thanks very much. Starting with item A is the exemption to the assignment of the Garden City Bus Interchange Lease from council to DTMR. An important, an important final step, I suppose, in handing over all of the operations of this to Translink. From what I understand, Translink currently manages most of the functions of the interchange at Garden City. And council maintains maintenance of some basic facilities in terms of cleaning and toilets and other things like that as part of its lease, so it does make sense to tidy that up. And this area will be the epicentre as we are learning of the major network review that will be undertaken as a result of metro services. So it'll be very important to, to get this right and to make sure that as these proposals are put to Translink and to TMR, that there is a, I suppose, one-stop shop, a simplified way of making sure that these changes are seamless for the commuters of Brisbane. And, you know, it was interesting to hear some of councillor Murphy's commentary earlier about the reception of the metro and particularly around the, you know, the, the ECA, that's right, how people were receiving, were receiving that down there. And he read some of his favourite comments from LinkedIn, I think. Here's a couple of my favourites from councillor Murphy's own Facebook page from residents of Brisbane. Robert says, "They're not made in Australia. Adrian Schinner doesn't care for Australian jobs." Theo said, "How long will it take before they get involved in a crash?" Link said, "Oh, look, an electric banana bus, so what." Adam said, "Brisbane has got to be built real..." I will apologise for the language. This is from councillor Murphy's own Facebook page. "Brisbane's got to be built real shitty to have this crap and not trams." So I suppose that's what the, that's what the, the public transport chair is hosting on his...
Excuse me, councillor Murphy, are you making your point, or just interjecting? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear. So that's, that's the kind of feedback that councillor Murphy's hosting on his own Facebook page about. He's, he said he was feeling excited at the ECA about, about the metro vehicle and that's what residents, maybe they're residents in his ward, that will be impacted on. That he is one of the, those eastern suburbs wards that the, the file does talk about being most impacted on on this metro bus review. So hopefully, instead of just reading a couple of LinkedIn comments, he'll go and talk to residents and maybe look at the feedback on his own Facebook page from time to time. But we will be supporting item A before us today. We'll also be supporting item C and D. On item C, we do, do accept the changes in the travel policy and modernising that and including Olympic travel as part of that is a legitimate form of travel now that we are a host city. And which brings me to point to item B, which is about the travel to South Korea and Europe in October and November for the deputy mayor. So as I said, there's legitimate travel. We believe there's legitimate travel to be undertaken as a host city for the, for the Olympic and Paralympic Games in 2032 and establish working relationships with past and future Olympic host cities as they come online as well in the lead up to 2032. But there does need to be a closer look at these trips as they come through. Are they really needed and is the right person going on them? Now, at the end of the day, the deputy mayor, councillor Christopher Adams, has no formal role in the Olympics. She might one day, but she certainly doesn't at the moment. There's $21,700 that ENC has approved and is seeking our approval to send the LMP deputy mayor overseas that quite frankly could be spent in, better in, you know, suburbs in Holland Park Ward or Cooperu Ward and Palara. Palara, you get, you get one of those basic bus stops for $21,700. Just one of those very basic ones they're going to, they're going to install. But this is, this is in the long line of consolation prizes for the deputy mayor, councillor Adams. She didn't get the Guernsey on the organising committee itself because the southeast Queensland mayors and other factional issues, I'm sure, were at play in there. And what we did see, the number-one pick of the Lord Mayor was the mayor of the Redlands, councillor Karen Williams. We know how that's all ended now. The second pick then along the way was the mayor of Noosa, I believe, who's now on the OCOG. And obviously, the last pick all the time is councillor Adams for this role, who's getting the crumbs of overseas travel at the expense of ratepayers. The person who should be travelling, who is on OCOG, is the Lord Mayor, if anyone. And we would certainly accept that. It shouldn't be the deputy mayor. The deputy mayor is benefiting from this largesse personally because she is getting to go on these trips without having a formal role on the OCOG itself. Week after week, the so-called Olympic Committee that we sit on is having presentations about things like vacancies in the Queen Street Mall. We've had presentations on bin, cameras in bins in the mall, things like that. Not an awful lot yet about Brisbane's role and council's role in rolling out the Olympic and Paralympic Games because we all know, we're all in those briefings about what council's role really is in the Olympics as, as a level of government. So we think Brisbane's role and council's role and what we should be discussing around the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games is creating a legacy. We hear that word a lot, but we don't have any detail on what that'll look like for the suburbs of Brisbane. We should be investing in sporting clubs in the future of our young sports people, in creating jobs for Brisbane residents for generations to come and doing more to support affordable housing in our city instead of just talking about and saying it's somebody else's problem everywhere along the way. Seeing more people shipped overseas is making us think this LMP administration has lost touch and lost track of what these games should be about for the people of Brisbane.
Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair. I just wanted to speak on item A, which is the exemption to the assignment of the Garden City Bus Interchange Lease from council to the Department of Transport and Main Roads. As we heard from the Lord Mayor earlier, this item is for the transfer of council's lease for the Garden City Bus Interchange to go over to TMR. Now, we know the Garden City Interchange is a key hub in our bus network. On average, there's over 1,000 bus trips every day that pass through this interchange. Almost 1 million passengers boarded or alighted at Garden City in the 2122 financial year, which I think shows to everyone in the chamber just how important this interchange is for residents. Council is the current lessie of the interchange, which sits on land within Westfield Garden City. I can't give it up, Chair. It's a habit, you know, I have had forced into me, wrote, learned over many years to call it Garden City, not even to call it Westfield Garden City, but it is always Garden City and its logo will always be that beautiful big peacock chair. But look, under the current lease, council is responsible for maintaining the interchange and the signage as well as the CCTV system. Transferring the lease to TMR will also transfer these responsibilities. But importantly, it won't result in any visible changes in responsibilities or service levels to customers. As Translink and the state government are the authority responsible for overseeing public transport services, we have been undertaking a process of transferring bus interchange leases back to TMR. And this is a process that has taken the better part of the last decade. And probably if we continue at this glacial pace, we'll take the better part of the next decade as well, Chair. We still lease 10 interchanges across the city, Turnbull, Chirmside, Inglewood, Stafford, Brookside, Carindale, Indrapilly, Mitchelton and Mount Ominy. And we would love to be leasing no interchanges across the city and have Translink assume responsibility for those interchanges as is their role as the, the peak authority for integrating transit across, across different service providers in different jurisdictions. But that, as I mentioned, the pace of the handover has taken a very long time and we believe will continue to take a long time due to the state's financial situation. However, TMR is currently planning DDA compliance works at the Garden City Interchange, which are required to make that interchange compliant with the Disability Discrimination Act 1992 and the rapidly approaching deadline for compliance with that act. The DDA works cannot be undertaken by TMR until the assignment of the Garden City Bus Interchange Lease is affected. Of course, we are supportive of this work. I'm sure this chamber knows that council has also been undergoing a process of upgrading bus stops across the city to ensure their accessibility. In the last five years, council has upgraded 1,546 bus stops to meet DDA requirements. We assess our stops for amenity and accessibility and prioritise them according to the number of people using each bus stop and the level of existing DDA compliance. This ensures funding is directed to areas of most need across the city and of course recognises that in a bus network of Brisbane's size, we have an extremely large number of stops to maintain and upgrade. And so we will continue to prioritise funding to ensure that we direct our resources to stops with the highest need across the network. The DDA works at Garden City Interchange need to be completed by the end of the year so that TMR have now requested to take over the lease as an absolute matter of priority in order to progress with these important upgrades. So that is why this is here without much notice to councillors. And I also wanted to, just while I was doing some research on some other items that were in, in this ENC chair, to just share a little bit of trivia with the chamber. Did you know that the Swiss city of Lausanne, which is on the, right on Lake Geneva, it is, it has a population of 140,000 people and it is the smallest city in the world which has a functional metro, a 28-station metro, rubber-tied metro and light rail. And, you know, I think that's pretty cool. You know what else? They named their metro lines. Guess what they named them? M1 and M2. So just, just like Brisbane. But thanks very much for that, Chair. I'll leave it there.
Okay. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd like to speak on item B of the ENC report on the overseas travel. Mr Chair, I'd like to firstly take this opportunity to commend councillor Adams for once again taking on the honourous duty of representing our city in important international events at a summit in October and bringing back the much-needed experiences and networks that will be crucial in delivering Brisbane 2032 Olympics. Mr Chair, as I, as I raised in the motion last week, our sister city Daegu is Korea's new world city and the United Cities and Local Government Conference, oh, oh, Local Government World Congress, which councillor Adams will be attending, followed by South Olympics Legacy Forum, is an important international event that will give our city the network experiences and the ideas and ideas that will be valuable to the delivering of Brisbane 2032 Olympics. Mr Chair, Daegu is Korea's new world city and shares many common features with Brisbane. Just like we are the biggest conference city on the southern hemisphere, Daegu has a strong plan to make themselves the international conference city in the northern hemisphere. And between August and December this year, well, I did a bit of research, there are 62 international conferences will be held in Daegu. And these conferences ranging from International Conference of Wireless Sensor Network, I assume that's about internet, and two things like International Conference of Nursing Ethics and Professionalism. So, Mr Chair, Daegu is working very hard in making themselves the international conference city. And that actually complements with our role on the southern hemisphere. Mr Chair, I have attended the 2017 APCS hosted by Daegu and understand the importance and values of these exchanges of experiences and networking in these international forums. There are lots of experiences and lessons we can learn from each other. So once again, I'd like to... So once again, I'd like to commend councillor Adams for taking on this honourous duty and I'm sure she'll represent Brisbane well internationally and bring back the networks, experiences and ideas that will be invaluable in delivering the Brisbane 2032 Olympics.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak just very briefly on item C. As we all know, item C is an update to our travel policy. Brisbane is a leading city in Australia and indeed the world, and we are clearly leading as a global city. The policy in its current form was adopted by council in the 90s. While some amendments have been made since then, a recent review of the travel policy meant that further amendments had to be proposed that will significantly modernise the policy and ensure that transparency with all council travel continues. It means the day-to-day arrangements for travel at an administrative level can be proactively managed within the guidelines of an approved expenditure. Several items which are no longer relevant have been removed. We've also clarified matters such as travel to Moreton Island for council officers. Moreton Island is part of Brisbane and the essential visits undertaken by officers undertaking the day-to-day council business should be treated as such rather than through this policy, through a procedure rather than through a policy. As I alluded to, the administrative processes previously included have now been carried over to that procedure and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Okay, well, I thank councillor Cassidy and the councillors in the opposition for the support of the two policies that are coming through today. It's a strange day when they suggest that I should be travelling instead of one of my colleagues, but, well, that's their view, I guess. Look, the reality is, I made it clear that this was not, this travel was not associated with doing what the OCOG does. The OCOG does other things. The OCOG has an important role. I would also point out, contrary to a lot of misinformation that is going around, that the two local government, I guess, representatives on the OCOG, one of them was appointed by legislation, which was myself. The legislation had any current or future Lord Mayor of Brisbane as a member of the OCOG and, in fact, a vice president of the OCOG. But then it also had another local government representative which would be appointed in consultation with the mayors of South East Queensland. And there was some commentary in the media recently about an original proposal floating around which would have seen a different makeup of the OCOG. I won't go into that, but the reality is the legislation that came through the State Parliament said that members of the OCOG would be myself and then one other local government person where the decision is made in consultation with the mayors of South East Queensland. And so, in the true spirit of the legislation and taking it even one step further, I decided that it wouldn't just be consultation with my colleagues, I would put it to a vote of my colleagues. And in fact, for both of the two different representatives that have joined me on the OCOG, they were chosen based on a vote of their mayoral colleagues. And so I just want to point that out, that's not my handpicked nomination, that is the choice of the mayors of South East Queensland. And so we acknowledge that this is a regional games and it wouldn't be appropriate for Brisbane to have both of the positions on the OCOG if there was only two local government positions. It is appropriate that the other councils and mayors are represented and that's exactly what happened. So, you know, this, like I said, there's all types of speculation about those positions and how they're chosen. They are based on state legislation and the second local government position was based on a ballot of the mayors of South East Queensland.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on the ENC report, items A, C and D together. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division, seconded.
Division has been called by the deputy mayor and by councillor Landers. Please ring the bells for division. Thank you. Class, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 22 in favour and one against.
Thank you. Councillors, please resume your seats. We now move to the vote on item B in the ENC report. Item B, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Please ring the bells. Thank you, class. Please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and five against.
Thank you. Declare that, carry. Councillors, please resume your seats promptly and quietly, councillor. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, councillor Adams, the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 2nd August 2022, be adopted. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. First of all, as I always do in my committee reports, is talk about what's been going on in the Brisbane Business Hub workshops and mentoring programmes in the last week and what's coming up. We had a fantastic function last week where we got to thank all of our many mentors that have been doing so many volunteer hours in the hub over the last 12 months. We have 65 mentors that have been giving their time free of charge to businesses who are startups or just need a little bit of help or have lost their way, need to figure out their value proposition or figure out how they get into the big businesses in Brisbane as well. And having 44 of the 65 there last Wednesday night was absolutely inspirational, one to hear from some of those businesses that have benefited from the mentors, but also hearing from the mentors and what they get out of it by working with some of the startup businesses and how sometimes the mentoring helps them as well to realise that sometimes they've got to look at things with fresh eyes. So can I say thank you to all of our mentors and what they do in our space at the Brisbane Hub because they do an amazing job and without them, we wouldn't be able to continue the fantastic support we give to small and medium businesses. This week, we have two more of our partner and business experts doing some fantastic presentations. On the 11th, we have How to Create Your Market Plan for, Your Marketing Plan for Business Success, which is an interactive workshop to teach participants with none or little marketing experiences on how to get a marketing plan, and that is by Planet Marketing, thank you very much. And on the 16th, at 9am, Live Life Beyond Your Fears: Creating Happy Families. So this is being presented by the company Creating Happy Families and it's an interactive workshop teaching participants how to improve their communication, build resilience, overcome adversity and help with self-esteem. Because we do need to remember that there is another part to our happy working life and that is a happy family, as everybody in this chamber knows as well. Before I get to the report last week, I would just like to talk about the report we did this morning in committee, which would have been from the Brisbane Host City Operations Team, who presented on the Inner Spark Programme, which is the planning, the very early-stage planning for legacy ideas for the Olympics. So I would just like to make it very clear because I hear councillor Cassidy said something about cameras in bins. Well, that was our IA technology to make sure we're more efficient in the mall, that was over 12 months ago. And yes, there's definitely stuff that we do in the Business Hub because we are the most small, business-friendly council in Australia. We're claiming southern hemisphere now, but we'll see. Someone will have to disprove us because that is in economic development. But just this morning, we had a presentation on Olympics and the opportunities and what the team are working towards to make sure that everybody in Brisbane can get involved in some of the big ideas. So yet again, truth, story, not two things that councillor Cassidy often puts together when he needs to make comments. Last week, we did have a presentation, as we do on the first committee presentation of every session, is about the economic update in Brisbane. In particular, we looked at the unemployment rates, which are the lowest they've been for 40 or 50 years, I think. The state unemployment rate at the moment is 4.6, but Brisbane's unemployment rate is 3.8% and job advertisements are higher than they've ever been. Surprisingly, it's not just in the unskilled labour, it's also in professional and management. And we're definitely also seeing that growth in the median house prices levelling out, if not dropping a little. So things are changing again in Brisbane, but that's why we are not sitting on our laurels in the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Every one of the aspects within my portfolio are working hard to make sure we support Brisbane businesses, we support employment in Brisbane and we support the legacy opportunities that we'll have going forward for the next 10 years. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? No further debate. We move straight to the vote. All in favour of this report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Firstly, Mr Chair, I would just like to touch on a few questions that councillor Cassidy asked me this morning at our presentation on the bus network review. Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy's concern about overloading the metro vehicles with people transferring is an important one and I'm glad that he finally now sees the problem with congestion on the busway. Metro, it's always been about adding more capacity to our busway system and delivering that high-capacity, high-frequency turn-up-and-go service. And unlike Labour's plan just to send more buses into the already congested busway, Metro gives us the additional capacity to move 30.4 million passengers every year by 2031 through a combination of new infrastructure, new vehicles and a redesign network. We know we've just ordered the initial fleet of 60 vehicles and have an option to add 40 more vehicles on top of that to a total fleet size of 100. And I'm confident with the fact that our vehicles can hold the more than 150 passengers that will be arriving every five minutes from passengers transferring from the modest truncations that we will be talking with Brisbane residents about in October. Councillor Cassidy also asked about reviewing bus routes across the rest of the city. Look, while in order to facilitate the M1 and M2 lines, the main changes will be around the south-east busway, I can assure councillor Cassidy the review process will allow passengers from all suburbs of Brisbane to share their views on where residents would like to see us deliver new services. As we continue to modernise our network and as the Lord Mayor has flagged previously, our ambition is to expand Metro into the north and out to the east and we'll be able to look at bus services in the city that haven't been touched in many, many years through this process. I look forward to launching further stages of the consultation with passengers as we all seek to work together to build a better bus network for Brisbane. Mr Chair, last week, our committee received an update on the impact of the February floods had on our public and active transport networks and the recovery progress that's been made thus far. Presentation and report are comprehensive, but let me just give other councillors in this chamber a brief summary. Sorry, councillor Wines, I know you're all across this, but other councillors would have varying levels of understanding of just how bad our public and active transport across the city was and continues to be affected and the rebuild. And we know that ferry terminals had various levels of damage across terminals, mooring and refuelling facilities, including eight of the 2011 flood recovery programme terminals that were significantly impacted. As I mentioned before, though, we did not lose any terminals unlike in 2011, so the recovery effort here is limited to repair work rather than rebuilding whole new terminals like we had to do after 2011. We're looking forward to more terminals being added back into the network from October, with the network being all but fully restored by the end of the year. As councillors would be aware, one of the impacts of the flood was the Drift Restaurant, which was sitting on our bicentennial bikeway, the state government's Drift Restaurant. After 10 very long years, we were glad that the state government was able to get rid of it and we're lucky to have been able to use plant and machinery from our green bridges to help get it done. The reallocation of resources for flood repair, along with the weather impacts themselves, means that we are now looking at a 12-week delay to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge construction programme. The equipment that the state government borrowed to do the work on the Drift Restaurant included a 400-tonne barge and 400-tonne crane for Drift Restaurant. We also used jack-up barge three and had a 250-tonne crane for the ferry terminals and a jack-up barge, which was, and a 250-tonne crane for Drift Restaurant. So a significant amount of equipment that we had on river to start work on Kangaroo Point Green Bridge spread across the city and we now know what the time impact is to our programme as a result. As well as that, there's more than 55 off-road bikeways and shared pathways that were flood-impacted, ranging from major debris across pathways to a total loss of infrastructure. We had more than 170 kilometres of bikeways and shared paths that were cleared of debris and clean with minor works undertaken. Council removed more than 300 cubic metres of mud from the Cultural Centre boardwalk and also removed a significant amount of silt, several tonnes of wood and multiple pontoons from the bicentennial bikeway in just over a week. Major construction projects are now underway at seven bikeway sites with improvement and betterment opportunities being considered. So at Royal Parade Banyo, interim access was restored on the 10th of June 2022 and further works are required to restore the waterway at this location. Kalinga Park, assessment and design works are now completed with the Colva Crossing being operational by 22nd of June. Walter Burke Park, construction restoration is underway, completion is anticipated by September 2022. And Walter Hampton Street at Stafford, so designed to reinstate a temporary crossing, is underway with completion anticipated by the end of November 2022. At Uxbridge Street in Grange, design is underway with completion anticipated by November 2022. At Horro Court Asplay, we have a detour in place while we design a bridge to replace the one that was destroyed, with completion anticipated by the end of June 2024. So a bit of extra time we're taking to get that one right. And then there's another site at Kuringal Drive in Jindali, we are designing to replace that bridge underway, again, completion by June 2024. The bus network, bus stop network, I should say, generally withstood the widespread flood damage. We had still around 241 stops that were impacted, Chair, out of about 6,000. I'm very pleased that our bus services were up and running soon after the floods to make sure people could get around our city. So, Mr Chair, as you can see, the work to get our transport system back on its feet following the floods this year is very significant. I have a lot of faith in the work that T4B, TPO and CPO officers are doing collaboratively to design, plan and repair this infrastructure and make it more resilient moving forward. Finally, Chair, the committee considered a response to a petition requesting lighting through the Yaronga Maruka Bikeway. Now, there's no money that will be available for design and construction funding for the project this financial year and the petition is requested. for the project this financial year, and the petition's request has been noted. And the project will be considered and prioritised against projects across the city. Subject of funding, councillor Griffiths was consulted and did support the response. I very much doubt that there would be much debate on this one today, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I now move the report for the vote. Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on, excuse me, Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The report presented to the committee last week was on the topic of going paperless on parking permits, an update on what has been a programme we've discussed in this place in the past. It's about a sustainable and electronic parking permit scheme. This one focused mainly on those with, in parking zones and controlled parking zones. And so, that spoke to that. Can I also reassure councillors that there are ways that residents who don't have a computer or don't use a modern internet-connected device can access the permit, the permits through the ordinary contact centre. There's a whole range of details that are in the report about how the system operates, but I want to reassure people that we still have a system for disability inclusion and for older people as well. So while we continue to modernise and become more sustainable, we also make sure that no one's left behind in that capacity. We had three petitions presented to the committee, all of which were supported by local councillors, and I hope that all councillors will support them as we proceed today.
Thank you. Any further debate?
Chair.
Councillor Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the petition for a no-left-hand turn from Moghl Road into Blakeon Street Kenmore during the morning peak hour period. This is something that should have had a successful outcome, but for some weird logic within the state government's Department of Transport and Main Roads. I was contacted some months ago by residents of Blakeon and Norm Streets Kenmore, who advised they were intending to submit this petition along these lines to council. I live within one kilometre of this area and have seen firsthand how motorists rat-run through these streets to escape the busy peak hour traffic on Moghl Road, only to create another congestion issue trying to re-enter Moghl Road near Kenmore Plaza. I undertook community consultation with residents in Blakeon and Norm Streets earlier this year, and the results confirmed what I expected, and that is that the majority supported a no-left-hand turn. Chair, I want to acknowledge the efforts of Kevin Chen in council's TPO, who conducted a traffic study and advised that based on the data, a no-left-hand turn was justified. However, as part of the process, council was obliged to advise TMR as Moghl Road is a state-managed road. To my surprise, and that of our council officers, we encountered strong resistance from TMR to our proposal. This is despite us presenting them with the findings of our consultation and the reasons why our traffic experts supported the move. TMR advised council, and I quote, "There is insufficient justification to ban the left-turn movement, and Brisbane City Council have alternative options to implement within its road network to minimise the potential of rat-running." TMR provided an alternative option for council to restrict the right turn from Norm Street into Cedar Lee Road, but council didn't support that as drivers entering Blakeon and Norm Streets with the intention of turning right onto Cedar Lee, Cedar Lee Road, would be unexpectedly surprised and frustrated by this turn restriction, leading to poor compliance and other risk-taking fact behaviour. Council considers the restriction of a left-hand turn into Blakeon Street upstream of TMR's suggested turn restriction location to be more logical, but TMR said it was unable to support that. I'm told it's rare for TMR to be unsupportive of a council recommendation, especially where it has broad community support. But TMR is solely responsible for all signage within the Moghl Road transport corridor, and ultimately had the final say on any changes within this corridor. I've advised residents of these streets of this decision, and they are equally as perplexed. But I've told them that I will continue to monitor the situation in Blakeon and Norm Streets, and will advocate again for this signage in the future if I believe this continues to be a problem for residents in these streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Surranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. Just on item A, I'd, maybe I'd like councillor Wines to perhaps organise a briefing for me on this. I was a little surprised to hear about these changes without more of a heads-up. My ward obviously has, I think, probably the largest number of residents who still use parking permits, being sort of an inner-city ward with quite a few regulated parking areas. And when we first switched to digital, one of the reasons for maintaining the paper visitor parking systems was the straightforward convenience of a visitor pops round to your place, you can just hand them a visitor permit to put in on their dashboard, and then they can park in front of your house. It's kind of that simple. And a lot of residents are in the habit of just keeping that visitor permit near their front door, or magnetised to the fridge, or whatever. And the system largely seems to work. The, I understand the rationale for the general shift towards digital permits, but I'm concerned that the use of visitor permits as a purely digital situation is going to make things really inconvenient for a lot of residents. And I wonder if councillor Wines, in his closing remarks, could just reflect on whether I'm right in saying that it's a lot less practical now? Because my understanding under this system is that whereas before, if a visitor pops round to your house and you're in a permit area, you can just hand them the visitor permit to put on on the front of their car, they will now, just as they arrive, before they can come in or whatever, they're going to have to go onto the council app or make a call to council, navigate the various screens, put in their regio number, have the visitor permit verified, just so they can park in front of your house? Have I got that wrong? And if I have, please correct me. But it sounds like that process is going to be a little bit more complicated. I don't want to oversell it. I'm not saying it's going to be the end of the world or massively more overcomplicated, but it does sound it's going to be a little less convenient than the current system. And I wonder if there's any way that at least visitor permits could remain paper-based, or even if the various other permits have to switch to digital. Maybe it's something that councillor Wines and I can take offline for a further discussion later, but ideally, I'd like a proper briefing on this, because this is going to affect thousands of residents in my ward. I'm very alert to the fact that when this change was made quite a couple of years ago now, it was somewhat controversial, and the compromise council came to was that it would continue to maintain a system of paper permits, even though the majority of residents would be encouraged to switch over to digital. So this now feels like a little bit of a departure from that previous kind of agreement that we as a council came to a couple of years ago. And I worry that you might be opening a can of worms here once people realise that they're going to lose that very convenient system that they've had for some time. I think it's not just about accessibility for people who don't have the internet or accessibility for people who don't use smartphones. It's also just a broader practical issue of if someone comes round to your house, you hand them a visitor permit, job done. It shouldn't be more complicated in that, we shouldn't have people who just pop round for a visit and they have to download and install some kind of app or log on to a website just so they can park there. So please, councillor Wines, could you address that?
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Wines.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair, and thanks to all contributors to the debate. I want to reassure councillor Sri that the way he described the app working, it's much simpler than the way he described it. Also, there's lots of inconveniences with having a hard copy paper document that you have to pin on the fridge, and if I was to sort of frame it the way he did, a person would have to walk a couple of hundred metres to the house, get it off the fridge door, walk it a couple of hundred metres back to the car, put it on the thing, and then walk back to the house, you know, look. Or they could just walk to the house conveniently and do it on their phone in two minutes. Maybe, probably less. See, it's a whole range of ways you could view and describe the conduct. But the point that I'm making is that the movement towards a paperless society is increasing. We have ways of making sure.
Point of order to you, councillor Surranganathan.
Will councillor Wines just take a really quick question?
Will you take a question, councillor Wines?
Sure. Thank you. So, because I haven't used the app myself, can you just give me a quick explanation of like, how many screens or how? You said it won't take two minutes.
Yeah, look, okay, here's the thing. The thing is that you can have up to 10 per household produced electronically, registered in the system, quite conveniently. If you did that using paper, you'd have to call up the call centre, you would have to have 10 sent to you, you would then have to dole them out to everybody who visited. But this is going to be far, far more convenient. As the way the system, the system is always increasing in its convenience. This will work. I'm confident that it will work, and that because of the changes largely around citizens' conduct around COVID and the requirement to scan in everywhere and a whole range of other things, this will be, this will be a very small step for people. And as I said, though, this council doesn't leave people behind, and that we are going to ensure that people with disabilities can access this service. However, I appreciate that as an inner-city ward, and it's not an offer I make merely to councillor Sri, any ward that has this system will make further information available to them.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes for afternoon tea break, when all, and that commences when all councillors have left the meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to touch upon a couple of questions that were raised in this morning's committee meeting by councillor Cook. So in particular, the first item she queried was related to a petition, which will be debated in the EPS committee report later this afternoon. But in essence, there was a, the petition questioned a development at 297 Moniquey Road West End. The petition requested that the application be rejected and the land be purchased by council for parkland, and specifically, why was the DA not addressed in the petition response? Well, the DA was actually addressed in the petition response. The first half of the petition response outlines the status of the DA, which is in the decision phase. I would note that council does not unilaterally reject development applications based on a petition. The Planning Act and City Plan provides a clear framework under which applications must be processed and decisions made, and that is the process that we are pursuing in this case. With respect to this specific development application, the development application is impact assessable. The petition was received outside of the formal public notification period. However, council's independent planning officers have considered the points raised by the petitioners as part of the assessment process. It has been a lengthy assessment process, with officers going back and forth with the applicant over multiple stages to address and resolve various matters. As noted earlier, officers are required under the Planning Act to assess each application in full, and decisions cannot be made before these steps are completed. As mentioned, any submission, petition or comment is taken into consideration as part of the assessment of an application, regardless of whether it is made within the formal notification period or not. Noting submissions made outside this period will not have appeal rights. The application is now in its decision stage, and it would be inappropriate to preemple speculate about a decision that is in the hands of council's independent planning officers. The other question that she raised related to development applications coming to committee for consideration. Now, approximately 4,500 development applications are processed by Development Services each year, which is a very significant volume of applications. These applications are assessed by council's very experienced and capable officers. Application assessment can include input from town planners, architects, heritage experts, engineers of various disciplines, design specialists, the list goes on. The Planning Act and City Plan provides a clear framework under which applications must be processed and a decision made, and that is the process that we continue to pursue. Appropriately qualified delegates make decisions ensuring they are reasonable and relevant and defensible if appealed. The involvement and decision-making of this group of independent and professional officers has served the city well. It provides for a mechanism to handle the very high volume of applications, coupled with the relevant experience, and takes into consideration the legal framework in which they are operating. The efficient processing of development applications is crucial in this city to support housing supply and economic development, and delegate-based approvals supports this process. Now, moving on to the committee presentation. In last week's committee presentation, we were provided with an update on the Ashgrove West Village Precinct project in councillor Toomey's ward. The project was launched in November 2019 and completed very recently in June 2022 with a budget of approximately $3 million, and it was successfully transferred to the asset owners and asset maintainers in July 2022. The project aimed to create a city of neighbourhoods outlined in Brisbane's Future Blueprint, to achieve optimum, optimal design outcomes laid out in the Design Led City, a design strategy for Brisbane, deliver a placemaking response to our subtropical climate, respond to COVID-19 impacts on small businesses, and address site-specific issues raised by community members through four stages of community engagement. The site constraints included Waterworks Road being an arterial road with a 60-kilometre speed limit, overhead and above-ground electrical cables contributing to a lack of shade and greenery, and curbside allocations causing pedestrian conflict during peak hours. Community engagement was undertaken, and the feedback received informed the project's plan. The plan incorporated utilisation of existing infrastructure to capitalise on the successful activities within the centre. Further, council undertook to improve the amenity and accessibility into and throughout the centre for visitors and local stakeholders. As a result, various improvements were successfully achieved, including revising the functional layout of the road, introducing traffic calming devices, reclaiming the underutilised carriageway for footpaths and public space, realigning and reducing Enerjex's overhead infrastructure, a village gateway that provides a visual marker upon arrival into the shopping precinct, incorporating green features to promote slower speeds, and new plazas providing shaded seating options. A village hub with upgraded hard surfaces, a rationalised street layout, widened footpaths, and the introduction of a contemporary street shelter to serve as a reference point within the centre. It also created a cohesive and tree-lined landscape. It incorporated new shade structures and public art. So certainly, based on last week's presentation, it's a terrific outcome for that part of Ashgrove West. Now, the outcomes of the project included comfortable and generous seating nodes, architecturally-designed shelter at the bus stop, and improved bus stop to cater for increased bus traffic, bespoke brick seating and garden trellises, redesigned road corridor with improved traffic flow and crossing points, removal and realignment of overhead power lines, and upgraded street lighting and stormwater collection and dispersal. So a very good outcome in that particular ward. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Allen. Is there any further debate? Councillor Toomey.
Pardon me. Thank you, Chair. I could talk until the cows come home on this project, which is about, by my watch, about two and a half hours. So I know, I know it's, I've got nine and a half minutes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Needless to say, this is an outstanding project for one part of Ashgrove Precinct, which is approaching 100 years old. To say that the project has not done anything for the area is a massive understatement. To give you an idea, Chair, of some of the issues that councillor Allen mentioned, for example, one problem that we continually had was example, one problem that we continually had was when Waterworks Road was widened back in the nineties, which was under the Sawley administration, the curb actually sat underneath the awning of some of the shops. So when the trucks were going down Waterworks Road, they would actually hit the awning and take part of it out. Now, I know that we like to keep things, like to keep our heritage, we have a few scuff marks on the underside of the awnings where the trucks have hit them, the landlords haven't painted over them yet, but we might heritage list them. They also used to hit the lights and the power poles. So as councillor Allen said, part of this project was to move a lot of the electrical infrastructure, that include the low voltage, the two forty volt plus also the eleven K. We also took the liberty of relocating an eleven K transformer from ground and then mounting it on pole just to give more space for for the shops, for the residents to sit down and enjoy the now tree-lined Ash Grove West. So if any of the councillors in the chamber want to know anything about eleven kilovolt oil-cooled transformers, I'm your man. The other thing that we did was a lot of the work that was done within the West Ash Grove Precinct tied back to Ash Grove itself. So I'll run, run off a few examples. The artwork that councillor Allen mentioned are five installations of Flindersia Australis or Crow's Ash, which is where Ash Grove gets its name from, in various stages of opening. And those seed pods were put around the precinct near the seating and to provide interest points. The other thing we did was we actually started planting, or we have planted, Flindersia Australis Crow's Ash along the strip. So we now have the trees that the suburb was named after back in, on the roadside, which is where they originally were, along with some of the the artwork that represents a significant part of Ash Grove's history. Councillor Allen also mentioned the shelter that we installed. Now, the shelter is a contemporary take on the air raid shelter that is on, oh, give me one right, Wickham Terrace. So that was redone, and that was basically intended to give a nod to all the servicemen that actually have passed through Ash Grove over the years to go to the lipperly, to go off to serve their country. So the the new contemporary shelter itself is a wonderful piece of of concrete architecture with brass trimming. It's serving as not only a shelter but also outdoor dining for the cafe next door, and it just really complements the whole area. When it's lit up at night and it's lit, it's downlit, provides a beautiful contrast and a talking point within that precinct, so when people are on the bus, they know where to get off. The plazas councillor Allen mentioned, there were two that were put in place, and their primary function was to take a lot of the heat, a lot of the reflected heat, a lot of the reflected glare out of West Ash Grove. If any councillors had been down through that area before the upgrade, they would have noticed that the area was very hot, very dry looking in summer, and a lot of the reflected glare coming off the road would penetrate into a lot of the the tendencies. So those, that heat and glare has now been taken away by plantings and the plaza area, which is also serving, not only as a place to stop and enjoy a cup of coffee and a croissant, but the local gym is also using some of that space as well for their outdoor exercises. So in a whole, this project has been absolutely fantastic. I would like to, before I forget, I would like to thank everybody involved in this project, from the BPP team all the way down to the City Standards Team, who are on the ground delivering the project. It was a tough project to deliver, because as you can imagine, there was no room for us to shut down the shops during construction. Most of the work was done at night, and a lot of the residents nearby are being disrupted during some of the roadworks, the curb and channeling, the power poles being replaced. I want to thank them for their patience as well, because what we now have is a fantastic outcome in an area that was suffering from heat, glare, a lack of green cover, but also impacted by the the high volume of pedestrians that ran through the area. Probably if I had to say what is the best part of this project, hand on heart, it's the widening of the footpaths through that whole area. As you can imagine, West Ash Grove is close to Marist Ash Grove and Mount St Michael's, and those students do love a good slurpee from the night owl. So having that access to get to their slurpee now is just outstanding, and I really want to thank, thank the team for looking, for delivering on that outcome. All in all, I want to thank also councillor Allen, the Lord Mayor, previous chairs during this project, councillor Adams and the former councillor Burke, for making sure that this project not only started on the right foot and was delivered on the right foot, but finally completed on the right foot. And I also want to pass on my thanks for the Lord Mayor for supporting this project. Thank you, Chair.
Any further debate? Councillor Allen? Thank you. We now move to the vote on the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, second of August, twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, second of August, twenty twenty-two be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Mister Chair, last week we had an updated presentation on the transformational Hanlon Park Beruda project, following its completion and the official park opening by the Lord Mayor and councillor Cunningham on the twenty-third of July. Hanlon Park was previously a large open space with a large concrete drain, and this project sought to return Norman Creek to a natural waterway, as well as upgrading the park with a nature-themed play area, picnic shelters and pathways. The project included planting four hundred and sixty-two trees and forty-three thousand shrubs, and we are already seeing the benefit to the waterway with an approximate sevenfold increase of native fish returning to the site. The site also withstood the February flood event with no erosion, no damage to the infrastructure, and the site only really needing to be hosed off and several plants re-established. Mister Chair, transformational projects like this are part of the Shrida Council's commitment to investing in our natural environment and to creating more to see and do in our suburbs for our residents to enjoy. Item B is a petition regarding the former East Brisbane Bowls Club and Backbone Youth Arts. Backbone Youth Arts transitioned to a newly renovated purpose-built performance facility at Seven Hills in February, where young creatives will remain at their heart. Backbone have provided feedback to councillor Howard that they were excited to move into the Seven Hills hub and are looking forward to activating the hub with and for the local community. Mister Chair, as a result of the devastating February flood event, as well as the Covid nineteen relief measures, the Lord Mayor announced in June, under the Rebuild and Recover prioritisation plan, that the Mowbray Park project has been paused. But when the city has been rebuilt and recovered, council will proceed with the delivery of the Mowbray Park vision. Item C is a petition requesting council reject the proposed development application at two eighty-one to two ninety-seven Montague Road, West End, and that council purchase the site to expand Davies Park. Council has been delivering the parkland identified in the South Brisbane Riverside Neighbourhood Plan and the Local Government Infrastructure Plan. This specific site is not currently identified in the LGIP, and as such, council is not positioned to be able to consider acquiring this land for park purposes. The development application is currently in the decision stage, and the latest information for the application is available to view on council's Development I website. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Can I ask that items B and C be put together for voting only?
The Seri Adam for voting, thank you.
B and C.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
C and B.
Thank you. B and C, C and B. CB.
Got it.
Mister, Mister Chair, thank you. I rise to speak on clause B, the petition requesting that the former East Brisbane Bowls Club not be demolished. Mister Chair, I know a bit about this petition because I was in fact the head petitioner when this petition was started. This petition ultimately was signed by over two thousand residents who wanted to see the former East Brisbane Bowls Club retained and upgraded, not demolished by this LMP council. Mister Chair, the reason I was the head petitioner is because residents in and around East Brisbane approached me and expressed their outrage about council's proposed demolition of this site on their own local councillor's watch, councillor Fiona Cunningham. Mister Chair, so many of councillor Cunningham's residents had tried in vain to get her to listen to them, to get her to do the job she was elected to do, which is to represent their interests of, to represent their interests, not tear them down. Mister Chair, councillor Cunningham and every single LMP councillor in this place, including the Lord Mayor, supports demolishing community facilities, supports demolishing community spaces, and supports the demolition of the former East Brisbane Bowls Club. This petition response is an absolute embarrassment and perpetuates the lies that this LMP council, including the local councillor, continue to peddle about this site.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
There's some very incorrect statements there, and I didn't think we're allowed to talk about people telling lies in this place. I mean, that is her belief, but to state that there is lies is impuding motive, and I ask her to withdraw that.
I'll remind councillors that there's no protection here from defamation proceedings, and I draw that to your attention and urge caution.
Thank you. And this site, the decision-making process has lacked completely in transparency and accountability to not only the people of East Brisbane, but the people of the city who have been following very closely what happens with this community site. We all know that the bulldozers are now on hold, probably until the council election in March twenty twenty-four. But what we also know is that for the next couple of years, the building will sit vacant because when Labour brought a proposal to this place just a matter of months ago to have the building available for community organisations, this LMP council said no. This LMP council said that they would prefer to have that building sit empty, as it has for the last six months, instead of utilising community-owned council facilities for a higher purpose, like supporting homelessness and housing organisations in this city, or supporting the arts and musicians in particular looking for performance spaces. Mister Chair, just on that issue of homelessness and housing, just to be very clear, because I think the LMP has a bit of selective hearing and memories when it comes to this issue. Mister Chair, when Labour talks about utilising vacant council leased facilities for housing and homelessness services, this building is exactly the type of facility we are talking about. Mister Chair, I'm not sure when the last time any LMP councillor, including councillor Howard, who had a lot to say about this this morning, actually investigated the diversity of spaces that can be used for homelessness and housing organisations, not just in Australia, but internationally, and the way that we are now using publicly-owned spaces. But if if they did, they would know that the diversity of how these spaces can now be used is not necessarily limited to people requiring places to sleep. Or as the Lord Mayor said, I think it was just last week, lying, I think, and I quote, lying on the floor of a shed. I'm not sure why the Lord Mayor of this city would simplify and mock what is a very serious issue and a complex issue in this way. This Lord Mayor, in the last few weeks, seems to have developed a bit of a self-serving narrative, which is a facade for the reality in this city, that this LMP council is doing the bare minimum to address housing affordability and homelessness. I shouldn't be surprised, Mister Chair, as this LMP council can't even progress the homelessness strategy or identify any lease sites that would be suitable.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
Lovely diatribe. The report on East Brisbane Bowls Club, please.
Yes, councillor Cook, can I bring you back to the report, please?
Cannot identify any lease sites, including this one, that would be suitable for providing to housing and homelessness services. Mister Chair, many organisations need storage, need facilities to operate their administrative functions, and of course, pop-ups for service delivery. Councillor Howard, after that appalling and mocking comments that she made towards me and towards the Labour opposition in this place this morning, councillor Howard has talked about and referenced the lease site in King George Square. That would be the perfect place, Mister Chair, for a pop-up for direct service delivery and to create an inner-city hub for support and referral services for housing and homelessness organisations. But Mister Chair, I will, I will come back to the former East Brisbane Bowls Club petition response. Instead of providing this space to one of the over one hundred organisations on the waitlist, instead of upgrading this facility, this LMP council will leave it to rot. The mayor has refused to meet with residents concerned about the future of this site. The local councillor supports this petition response today that effectively seals the fate of this much-loved community facility, which will see it reduced to rubble. Today and every day, Labour has stood with the East Brisbane community when their own LMP councillor, this LMP council, and this LMP Lord Mayor refuse to do so. I encourage all councillors in this place to consider how they would feel if this was happening to a community facility in their local area. If this LMP councillor, council came into your community and proposed to bulldoze a community facility, if over two thousand of your residents opposed that outcome, would you ignore them? If over two thousand of your residents wanted to see the site upgraded, not demolished, and used for the benefit of the broader community, would you stand against them? Today, Mister Chair, if the answer of any councillor in this place is yes, and if any councillor in this place votes yes today, I think that you need to seriously consider why you are here and what your higher purpose is, because it is clearly not to act in the best interests of your community, who you are elected to represent. Labour does not support the demolition of this community facility today, and we never will.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor, sorry, councillor Sarangana.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on all three items. Firstly, on Hanlon Park, I think this is probably one of the best projects I've seen Brisbane City Council undertake in my time as a city councillor, right across the board. I think it's fantastic and a real credit to the council officers. I do want to emphasise, though, that this is just the start of realising that full Norman Park vision. There's a lot of work still to go with other sections of the creek, both further south, the, there's still a big concrete drainage channel stretching back towards the motorway. And so while this one stretch of Hanlon Park has been restored as a more natural corridor, I, I wonder when the next stretch is going to happen, and I think it should happen sooner rather than later. The ecological benefits of connecting Hanlon Park further south to the forest around Armwood Place is quite significant, and there's something of a multiplier benefit there, where restoring just this little bit of habitat area is good, but connecting this little habitat area to the much larger habitat areas further south would be substantially better. So I do encourage the council to look at, at where, where the next stages of this Norman Park vision will be happening. And I wanted to, in particular, highlight that the, some parts of the vision talk about connecting a green and corridor and a creek corridor through from Woolangaba Rotary Park along the old King Fisher Creek alignment towards the, towards Wellington Road. So the council has done a pretty good job of preserving a little chain of parks along that former creek alignment, and it would be really good to see a bit of money going to that stage of the Norman Creek, Norman Creek vision, noting, of course, that the Olympics are apparently now on the way, and this, this creek is going to be kind of at the southern gateway to the Gabba area. It sort of runs roughly up to where the Broadway Hotel is. And so the Broadway Hotel and that Logan Road intersection is kind of the southern approach to the Gabba. Obviously, something needs to be done to fix up and restore the Broadway Hotel, and at the same time, there needs to be a comprehensive plan to, and not just a plan, but actual funding, to complete that next stage of the Norman Creek vision, connecting King Fisher Creek and that part of the waterway corridor back into. Creek and that part of the waterway corridor back into the main Norman Creek area. And so I do think this is a really good use of funding. It's outside my ward now. This is, I'm not, I'm talking about the side of Woolangaba that's not even in my electorate anymore. So I don't really have direct skin in the game around this, but I just do think it would be really great if we could proceed with those next stages of the Norman Creek vision or master plan, and recognise that this is flood mitigation work. This is, dollar for dollar, this is really high-value benefit in terms of flood mitigation work, because if we can restore this creek catchment and rethink the way water flows through these neighbourhoods, we'll be able to stop a lot of that overland flow that cuts off low-line streets around Woolangaba and East Brisbane during heavy rains. So, great job on the Hanlon Park project. I think it really is very positive, and apart from my usual quibbles that there's a bit more concrete than necessary, I really don't have much negative to say about it. It's great to see it happening. In terms of the two petitions, I share Labour council's concerns about the demolition of Backbone Bowls Club. I mean, I'm pretty optimistic because I don't think the council's going to knock it down. I think they'll lose the next election and then we'll be able to save this space. So, yeah, that's like, getting a pause until 2024 is, I'll take it, I'll take that as a win. I think, like, yeah, there's a bit of ambiguity about exactly when it's been paused to. I think it would be pretty silly for the council to try and demolish it just before the 24 council election, which I presume means it's safe until at least March 2024, which gives us plenty of time to preserve it. I do think it's a bit sad, though, that for the next couple of years, it's just going to be sitting there empty, I presume. And I would suggest to the council administration that they should be doing something with that building in the meantime. Councillor Cook's made some reasonable suggestions about different ways that it could be opened up to the community. We did see during the February floods, this Bowls Club was one of those local community relief centres. People were stopping off to drop off food and pick up food, to have showers, to get on the internet, to charge phones. This Bowls Club was a community hub and a really important touch point for people during the floods, when quite a few streets around East Brisbane had gone underwater and there weren't any other local services active in that immediate neighbourhood. So I think we really do need a community facility on this side. I've spoken at length about this on other days, so I won't rehash all the arguments all over again, but it really is the wrong decision to knock this Bowls Club building down. We do need more community facilities in that area. We also need more parkland, but we should not have to choose between the two. And it's been disappointing to see the LMP trying to pit the different sectors of the community against each other and say, well, if you want more parkland, we'll have to knock down a community facility, or if you want community facilities, you can't have green space. Actually, a rapidly growing neighbourhood needs more of both, and the council needs to plan for and budget for the delivery of both new and upgraded community facilities and additional parkland. And I'll continue to make that point in this chamber at every opportunity. Finally, with the other petition for the development along Montague Road, I think if this was happening in any other ward, that the councillors would be making a lot of noise about it. I guess I've seen this sort of thing happen so many times now that I'm not even that surprised. But just for context, for people who've missed it, this site is zoned six stories, and then the backside of the side of the site is zoned for 12 stories. So the front of the site is zoned six stories, and then the back half of the block further away from the road is 12. The development application is for 20 stories. So this is a dramatic violation of the height outcomes in the neighbourhood plan. We're not talking about, you know, negotiating a few metres here or there, or whether a rooftop garden counts as this extra story, whatever. This is a site zoned for six and 12-storey buildings, and the developer has applied to build 20-story towers. And I don't think there's another councillor in this chamber who would be happy with that if that was proposed in their ward. I've made my views on this very clear. I think the council's approach to this development has been poor. I think the council should have just rejected it much earlier on. I think this petition response is also too weak. It just says that the council's going to keep assessing. Actually, the council should just be rejecting this development application altogether. The concerns about this DA aren't just around the height, they're around the fact that this particular section of Montague Road is very, very congested, and this DA introduces hundreds of additional car parking bays, off-site car parks, immediately next to the intersection of Montague Road and Vulture Street. So the traffic impacts alone from this kind of development at this location would be horrendous. But there are also concerns about impacts on amenity, the fact that the infrastructure to support this development isn't there, particularly in terms of drainage infrastructure. But the fundamental principle, really, is that communities should have a say in how their neighbourhoods change. And it does really make a mockery of Brisbane City Council's planning system when a site can have an acceptable height outcome of six stories, with the one's back part of the site having an acceptable height outcome of 12 stories, and developers are proposing 20 stories. And I just think that, like, it's self-evident to me that this is a sign of the too-close and too-cozy relationship between the LMP administration and the property industry. I think that goes without saying at this point, and that's what residents are seeing across the city, is that council is bending over backwards to support the property industry. And LMP councils in this chamber have been unashamed and unapologetic about that. They're quite happy to say that they love to support what private property developers want to do. But the interests of private property developers are frequently at odds and in conflict with the interests of local residents and the long-term public interest. And this development application is a classic example of that. The developers are not offering enough community value to justify such dramatic exemptions to the neighbourhood plan. They're also not offering any form of public housing or subsidised accommodation. The construction impacts alone from this thing are going to be dramatic. We're talking about a project that'll run for several years with significant dust and noise and pollution and traffic impacts on the surrounding neighbourhood. And I should add that the infrastructure charges that the developer will be contributing to this site won't even be enough to pay for the drainage upgrades that will be necessary for the project to be viable. The money that council is going to be collecting from the developer to pay for local infrastructure and services won't even cover the cost of catering for the people in this building. So there's no public benefit arising from supporting this development, and as such, the council should have very clearly rejected this a long time ago, rather than wasting ratepayers' money and rather than stressing out residents by keeping this thing open and acting like it might be approved. As a matter of common sense, it's going to have to be rejected at some point, because otherwise it's going to go to court anyway. But this really shouldn't have gone to that point.
Councillor Srenganarthan, your time has expired.
Well, I've got five seconds left, so.
Time has expired on my clock. So thank you, further speakers. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the petition on the East Brisbane Bowls Club and the Backbone Youth Arts. And I thought it was worth updating the chamber on some of the events and activations that have been undertaken by Backbone recently at their new home at the Seven Hills Hub. For some background, Backbone commenced activity at the Seven Hills Hub from February this year under a hire agreement and are now fully operational at the site. So starting in February, Backbone launched its first Young Creators Workshops at Seven Hills Hub, providing a creative and uplifting space for young people aged eight to 18 to engage with imagination, playfulness, and learning through creative arts. These workshop programmes have given many young people the opportunity to be a part of a supportive environment and improve their creative talents, and I'm happy to report that term three of Backbone's Young Creative Workshops is currently underway. Backbone have also recently announced their Pilot Artists in Residence Programme, which seeks to develop the skills and creativity of three young and emerging artists. These artists in residence will be supported by a dedicated artist mentor, and we are keen to follow the journey of these young creatives. This weekend, Backbone are also hosting a two-day screenwriting workshop in collaboration with Creative Angle Studios, designed to educate young and emerging screenwriters and assist them in bringing their projects to life. So we can definitely say that there are no shortage of activities that are taking place at the moment at the Seven Hills Hub, and it's been great to hear the stories about how Backbone have activated this purpose-built facility with a range of programmes and events. We are also keen to continue to foster Backbone in their endeavours, which is why, earlier in the year, we announced that Backbone would be added to our cultural organisation programme to help Backbone develop an innovative sector and drive Brisbane's creative economy. We do also appreciate the positive way Backbone Youth Arts has engaged with council around their relocation to the Seven Hills Hub, and it's been very inspiring to see how Backbone have been able to enliven this precinct for the benefit of Brisbane's creative sector. I also want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank the council officers who have worked very closely and collaboratively with Backbone to ensure that the facilities at Seven Hills have been able to meet their needs and allow them to thrive at this new location. Through you, Mr Chair, I just want to say that this is evidence that the Shriner Council treats all of our creatives with a great deal of care. We have supported Backbone from the very beginning and will continue to do so. There was much rhetoric in this chamber about what was happening with Backbone artists. They have always been supported by the Shriner Council and will continue to be supported. There was some dialogue earlier in this debate around the Mowbray Park and what's happening there. The facility there is not suitable for anybody to use at the moment, and one of the things that I want to put on the record is that the Shriner Council treats our vulnerable with dignity, something that those on the other side of the chamber don't seem to understand is an important aspect of the pathways out of homelessness, that the Shriner Council has been supporting for many, many years, has continued to support in the last budget, and we just believe that it is very, very important that we have wraparound services that support our more vulnerable people right across Brisbane. I'll leave the debate to the further.
Thanks, councillor Howard. Any further debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just rise to briefly comment on some of the points that were made by councillor Sri Ranganathan. Just quickly, this site at 297 Montague Road actually has an existing approval on the site for a five-tower development that has a very, very average public realm outcome and virtually no connectivity through to the park and surrounding areas. That's what's already approved.
Councillor, please.
So what we have here, we have a revised development application for two towers with less units in it than the previous approval, with a significantly better public realm outcome, better part of 4,000 square metres, a piece of green space being handed back to council, much better connectivity. So what's in front of us at the moment, four decision by council's planning officers, is very, very different to what's already approved, and certainly, in my mind, is probably a much better outcome than what's currently approved. Now, the other thing is councillor Sri Ranganathan mentioned that the community didn't get a say. This is an impact-assessable DA. The community gets to feed into this process, so this notion that they don't get a say is incorrect. I'd also note, this sort of notion that you can just unilaterally reject these things, that is not appropriate. We have a planning act with a very clear framework that requires us to go through a certain process, and that is the process that we are pursuing. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Srenganarthan.
I found that really helpful. Would the council take a quick question? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. Just briefly on both of these items, I wasn't going to speak on the clause B, but I feel like I have to after councillor Howard entered the debate and confirmed what we, you know, had suspected all along with this administration's approach to these sort of community facilities in saying that this facility, the former East Brisbane Bowls Club, I think she said, is not fit for anyone to use, was the quote that she used. And therein lies the problem, because what this petition was about was council saving the East Brisbane Bowls Club and, at the time, Backbone Youth Arts. Granted, they have now moved out, we have a facility that the community wanted saved. And then over 2,000 people signed that petition, calling for that to happen. And then what we know, after doing some investigation and calling the files and looking at the initial community feedback about that Mowbray Park vision, what we know is that the community strongly wanted that community facility retained and upgraded or replaced with another community facility. That was a strong feedback. The feedback wasn't that the community wanted a bulldoze and replace with a car park. That's essentially what that vision, if you can call it that, recommended as it was put out to the community in its final stages. We know the community wanted community facilities like the East Brisbane Bowls Club upgraded, enhanced, all replaced with better ones out there. And what we had just now was the chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee get up and enter this debate and say that on her watch and on this LMP administration's watch, they are happy and okay with our community facilities being let run down on their watch.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Howard.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
And when they are run down to such a poor state of affairs, they then recommend they get bulldozed. I mean, it seems on the face of it very nefarious, a very nefarious approach to take to community facilities, where you actively, as an LMP administration, run down these facilities, and when, in their own words, they're not fit for anyone to occupy anymore, you bulldoze them. That's the LMP's approach in this space and in this place. And the local councillor, councillor Cunningham, who is here today, I think, I don't remember her getting an apology, is absent from this debate, and she has been absent from this debate in the community as well. When there's 2,000 of your local residents demanding that you stand up and be their voice in here and fight against this LMP administration's plans to bulldoze a community facility in your ward, you don't go missing in action. You don't vacate the debate out in the community, you don't go missing in action in the council chamber. It's very disappointing for.
Point of order.
Point of order to you.
I'm sorry, but I just need to clarify that councillor Cunningham has gone home to six children, and maybe he just should deal with councillor Cunningham how we are told to deal with councillor Cook. It's out of line.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, there may be various reasons why councillors aren't here. You cannot make presumptions, please.
So councillor Cunningham has completely vacated the space on this issue in her own community. I'll accept that, that councillor Cunningham has gone home. That's fine today. But for the last, I mean, how long has this been going on? This was presented in August last year, this petition, so a year ago, and in the months leading up to that, the community was screaming out for political representation, because that's what councillor Cunningham is supposed to be, supposed to be their voice in this chamber, not this LMP administration's voice out in the community. And that's the approach time and time again we get from LMP councillors and this LMP administration. They treat this as just a job. They treat this as a pay packet, they come along and they go out into their communities and they just spin the LMP line. Whatever is decided by civic cabinet and by the administration, they go out to their communities and say, that's what you are getting. They are not the representatives these communities deserve, and this is more evidence of that. You can't have a petition which ran for a very short period of time and got over 2,000 signatures and ignore it and say everything's hunky-dory. You can't have the chair of the committee supposed to be responsible for maintaining and providing community facilities to the residents of Brisbane out in the suburbs saying, oh, these things are roffing all around us, they can't be fit for any purpose whatsoever, let's just roll the bulldozers in. That's a very, very bad outcome for the residents and the ratepayers of Brisbane. More evidence that people aren't getting good value for money from this administration and not good representation from elected representatives. On clause C as well, there's some serious confusion around this, and again, I think this points to a very serious problem in this administration, where we have chairs of committees that don't know what on earth they're doing. Again, they just must treat it as a job, they turn up, get a series of papers put in front of them at committee meetings and don't really know what it's about, because we questioned councillor Davis why this petition calling for the rejection of a development application ended up in the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, and she didn't know. She said, I don't know, there's a portion about a park.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Davis.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Thank you, noted.
No, she, oh, no, sorry, you had spoken. I beg your pardon. So in the committee meeting, she said it just is, there's a part of it which deals with purchasing of land for a park, so it's just there. I suspect why it didn't end up in the city planning committee is because that committee, at this point of this development application, at the decision stage, has the power to recommend that full council either approves, amends, or rejects the development application. So if, at this point, right now, when this petition to reject the DA landed in the city planning committee, councillor Allen's committee could have recommended to council today to reject it, to amend it, or approve it. And when that was questioned, that committee, councillor Allen didn't seem to know either. And when that was questioned, that committee, councillor Allen didn't seem to know either what the hell was going on. So obviously, obviously, there's something going on here in trying to cover up the real reason that this petition has landed in this committee and the decision-making process around that is very opaque.
Point of order to you, deputy mayor.
Again, imputing motive about a cover-up when it's clearly been answered twice now why this petition was in parks.
I'll remind you, councillor Cassidy, that there is no privilege in this place.
Well, I mean, okay, if it's not a cover-up, it's just sheer incompetence, because these councillors had no idea around the decision-making process. So if they didn't lie to us in these committees when we were asking these questions, they simply had no idea what was going on. I make room for that possibility, that distinct possibility, they have absolutely no idea what's going on. They're simply just given some papers when they go into a committee meeting, read from them, and that's that. We won't be supporting any of these items.
Councillor Howard, your claim of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, the leader of the opposition intimated that we let community facilities run down, then bulldoze them. False, totally false. In fact, the Shriner Council has invested more in our community facilities.
Thank you, councillor Howard, you've made your point. Councillor Davis, your point of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Mr Chair. With regards to the leader of the opposition asserting that we were unaware of why the petition was in EPS committee, he was provided a reason, and that is that the crux of the petition was about purchase of a park.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Davis, summing up. No further debate, no summing up. So we have three items before us. We'll vote first on item A in the Environment Parks Sustainability Committee report. All in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We have items B and C together. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Please ring the bells. Thanks, Billy. Please close the bars. Marks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being sixteen in favour and five against.
Thank you. I declared items B and C carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 2nd of August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. We had a committee presentation on the evolution of dog-off-leash areas, otherwise colloquially known as dollers. It's interesting to hear how they started back in the late 1990s at New Farm Park, with the original first one there being a little small fenced-off area in that park. It was so well-received that the actual fully, first fully fenced large dog-off-leash area was actually formalised at Anzac Park in Tuong. We have now more than a hundred of them across the city, as I'm sure every single councillor in this chamber has these in their wards. They're a good, they have their good points and they have their bad points, let's just say, from a maintenance point of view, and as I joked in the committee last week, I like to call myself Kim Marks Maintenance, or Kim Maintenance Marks, whatever. Councillor Cumming thought it was funny at the time, maybe he doesn't now. He's shaking his head. Anyway, I thought it was hilarious. So, yeah, so maintenance on these much-loved, love-to-death, dare we say, facilities are a real problem for our maintenance team. So the team are looking at various other ways that they can do something with the space as opposed to just the traditional grass. Obviously, residents who love their, what they call fur babies, so much, and they want more and more for their dogs to enjoy, and it was kind of interesting, we looked at some of the future design principles, and the officers have identified a few little areas, one called the quiet lawn. I'm not quite sure how we ensure the dogs are quiet in that space, but like, you can't make people quiet on a bus even though there's quiet areas. There's a specific digging area, active agility, which of course, a few of our parks have got in. We've got the open space running and ball play. And then we have a sniffing and rummaging and buffer, which I thought was quite cool. I'm like, okay, so how do we make sure they only do any sniffing in that area? But anyway, I'm sure the officers will be able to answer all of those questions when they come up. But look, it was a very interesting presentation, and as I say, we are continuing to evolve these dollers over the period of time, and as new products come online, officers will continue to look at what we can do in that space for their residents and their fur babies. Thank you, Chair.
Is there any further debate? Oh, councillor Cumming.
Very quickly, I can't recall councillor Marks making that joke, and...
I'm sorry, was councillor Cumming asleep?
Jokes from councillor Marks are so rare, I'm sure I would have had it see it on my memory, so I don't know. Look, in relation to these dog-off-leash, I'm also a bit concerned about, there were some of the upgrades that had been carried out in certain parts of the city just looked like something off another planet to me, because they hadn't been anywhere near Winter Manly Ward, I can assure you that, and no one had been around to tell me that there was a possibility of getting money for that. So I am concerned about some bias in favour of these upgraded, new-type dollers in LMP wards, and I hope that's not the case, but I'm sure it is.
Thank you. Turn your microphone off now, councillor.
All righty.
Thank you. Any further debate? Something up, councillor? Oh, sorry, for councillor Marks. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you. I was going to get up and speak about dollers, but I just wanted to make a few comments on the evolution of off-leash parks. And I think probably what I really want to communicate to the chamber and to the chair is that really the most important part of a dog park, of course, is the space that it occupies, especially for small and large dogs, right? There should be two separate parks for each of those sizes. And for the most part, there's a lot of parks around Brisbane that does have that division. But the large dogs, of course, are, they need obviously a lot more space to run around, and they love to run around. I take my greyhound down to the College Avenue one from time to time, and she spends half the time sniffing, the other half the time racing around, and it's a really good size. But it's not the case with every dog park, and I think we should do everything we can to possibly expand the existing dog parks that we have, to make those large dog park areas even bigger, and to put some more agility equipment, because it seems to be a very popular thing. The biggest complaints I get about my dog park, or the dog park at College Avenue, is the drainage issue, and sometimes that's just inevitable because of the space that the dog, the dollar was put into, probably in some cases didn't have the best drainage. But we should also have a look at that drainage issue, because with this big rain event we just recently had, the dog park actually, especially in the big dog park area, stayed very mushy for weeks on end, actually, and people were complaining, and obviously, you know, it rained, it got wet, it has to have time to dry out. But, you know, possibly the drainage should be looked at as well. I mean, it's nice to have the evolution or some of these new things that are going to the dog park, but I think we've got to get the basics right first, and I think that's very important. So I just wanted to get up and just express some of the concerns that some of my residents had in regards to their experiences in their dog park and put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, to address councillor Strunk's point through you, Mr Chair, the issue we have with the location of dollers is obviously prime real estate. You know, a lot of time when we have a development built, the piece of land that's left over, so to speak, from the developer is usually the most unsuitable piece of land. It's not necessarily the most prime real estate, so it's basically the bit that we're left over to work with, which can either become a children's playground or a dollar. So, and again, I understand the need for as large a dollars as possible for the large dogs, and then the people with the small dogs want small dog dollars and stuff, and I've even had people wanting me to separate into the sext and the de-sexed dogs, which I'm not quite sure how my officers were going to manage to work out what that one is, how they're de-sexed or not de-sexed. But look, the reality is the requests in dollers can go on endlessly, on people wanting all sorts of different things in their dollers. It's a matter of land, how much have we got that we can use in a dollar, and if you can identify a space in your ward that you would like to create a dollar, you go through the normal process like we all do. And to answer councillor Cumming's question through you, Mr Chair, you put up a budget submission. From memory, the ten years I've been in here, they're usually around Valentine's Day, February the 14th, something like that. I seem to remember as a date that we were requested to have our budget request in, so can I suggest, and I mean, you've been, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cumming's been a councillor way a lot longer than I have, you identify an area where you would like it to have a dollar, and then you put it and talk to your council officers, and they will say whether they think it's suitable location or not, and then you put it in a budget bid, and if worst-case scenario, you don't get it up, you've got your set funds to use, and that's how a lot of us have got the agility equipment into these dollers and sand pits and that sort of stuff. So you know the process as well as I do in the chamber. Councillor Cumming through you, Mr Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 2nd August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Now, I know that the chamber has probably been waiting a long time to find out what happened in Brisbane during recess, and I think that it's only right that I should give you an update, a very quick one, I promise, before moving to the report. So one of the exciting things that we have just done recently is the opening of the Maruka District's Australia Football Club new player and umpire change rooms, and that's in councillor Griffiths' ward at Bodestert Road at Maruka, and it was a great opportunity to see a number of different areas come together. So the state government provided funding, we provided some funding, the AFL Umpires Association provided some funding, and the AFL Queensland provided some funding. So we were all in this together. It was a great morning to launch the new change rooms, long overdue from what councillor Griffiths tells me, but a great opportunity to see different levels of government and peak sports bodies working together for a great outcome. I was also privileged to attend the Cooperu Women's AFL during the Pride Round on the 16th of July, and again, fantastic to see the work that is happening within our sporting fields in terms of diversity, and the Shriner Council is always kicking goals for inclusive sports. So I thought that was, yes, I was hoping you were all listening. It is just to make sure that you're all listening, okay? Now, I'm going very quickly go through some of these wonderful things that occurred during the recess. We had the World Press photo exhibition down at the Powerhouse. It was fantastic. Those of you who got long to see it know that this is an annual event that happens at the Powerhouse, supported by the Brisbane Airport Corporation, and again, this year didn't disappoint, and there were some fantastic Australian entries as well. I attended the 2022 Brisbane NADOC Ball, and again, that was something that hasn't been able to be held for a couple of years, but it was, again, a fantastic opportunity to meet with everybody at the NADOC Ball and for Brisbane City Council to be supporting that event. The Australasian Dance Collective, 32.0, again, they were all set to perform at QPAC, and the floods arrived, and I think the very day of the performance, it meant that they couldn't continue. And I'm thrilled to see that their artistic director, Abi Hollingsworth, worked very closely with Kate Gould from the Brisbane Powerhouse, and they were able to present the wonderful work at the Powerhouse, and everybody enjoyed it immensely. The MacArthur Museum had its annual dinner to celebrate the 80th anniversary of Douglas MacArthur being here in Brisbane, and can I say to everyone, please spread the word to your residents that we have the most amazing MacArthur Museum right in the heart of the city. They play host to a lot of schools, a lot of schools go along, but if you haven't been down there, take a wander on one Tuesday before chamber and go and have a look and see the wonderful work that the MacArthur Museum do. I was also privileged to attend the Night for Night Watch 2022 dinner party, yet again a victim of COVID, where they were hoping very much to hold a ball in Brisbane City Hall, but they're now going to try and do that next year, but we had a dinner this year, and yet again, the wonderful work that Chaplain Watch do in the valley is second to none. It was a great privilege for me to be the only politician there, actually, and I do recognise that Grace Grace is a great supporter of Chaplain Watch and so is the state government, but it is something that I think we all need to be aware that they do this most amazing job. I was also privileged to represent the Lord Mayor at the Queensland Choir 150th Anniversary Celebration Dinner. Now, they tell me that the only time that they've not been able to perform was in the, is was last year with COVID. So they performed all through world wars, et cetera, but COVID really had an impact on them. But again, fantastic opportunity to hear the stories of a choir that has been continuously operating for 150 years, which I thought was just amazing. So we're almost there. Last Friday, councillor Marks and I attended the Brisbane Tongan Community Relief Charity Dinner at Brisbane City Hall, and what an event that was. We had the Princess Angelika who was there and held court, literally, in our beautiful city hall, but it was an amazing opportunity to see the communities come together to support the charity dinner for the Tongan community and to raise $50,000, which they were able to present to the princess. And then just on Saturday night, I was again privileged to represent the Lord Mayor at the Ravishing Fashionists' Fashion Show for 2022, and it's the fourth year that this has been held. It is an opportunity for women to be empowered more than ever, regardless of their size, shape, age, or ethnicity, and Ravishing Fashionists has played a key part in helping break stereotypes in the fashion industry. So we need to say a big thank you to Up Makai, who has been doing this now for four years. She was, I think she was Mrs Australia in 2019, and is absolutely committed to making sure that we are supporting young women in their aspirations. So there are all the wonderful things that have been happening recently, and I know that you're all wanting to know what's happening with DZ Death Race. Well, it is their 10th anniversary year. I will bring you more information about that next week. I can't divulge everything today. So moving to the committee presentation, and councillor Cassidy has just arrived in time to hear me talking about DZ Death Race, because I know that it's something that he's very keen about, and so he'll have to wait till next week to hear about the 10th anniversary. So moving to the committee report, we had a report on the Brisbane Festival 2022. Now, what can I say about the Brisbane Festival other than it is the most magnificent, amazing thing that Brisbane ever sees? So we are returning this year with 22 new works, including six international works, the first time we've been able to bring international works back. The festival employs more than 1,250 artists and art workers, of which 130 are First Nations artists and 1,000 are Queensland-based artists. The festival has over 500 performances planned, including over 280... are Queensland-based artists. The festival has over 500 performances planned, including over 280 free performances. So some of the highlights will be the Brisbane's Art Boat, which will be floating down the river from midnight to dawn. So it, it fits into the nighttime economy category. And of course, the, the Brisbane Festival is going to be launched this year with the wonderful River Fire happening at the beginning of the festival. So we'll all be looking out for the fireworks that will be happening at the beginning of the festival. And of course, we also have a number of our Brisbane Serenades. So this year, we have seven mini festivals and eight dance hall performances, and they will be across 15 locations. Another, another item that I think is worthy of mentioning is the Night Walks with Teenagers. It's a walking performance created with local young people who plan, design, and lead the walks through the city at night, focusing on connecting young people and the community to engage in a shared social experience. Now, we have made sure that every ward office has received a programme for the Brisbane Festival. And we're also going to make sure that we send out some material that you'll be able to vote, to post on your own social media so that we can get the word out. Can I just say how important it is that we, as local councillors, get behind this fantastic festival and do everything that we can to let our residents know about the amazing opportunities that we have to really enjoy everything that's happening across Brisbane? More to see and do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Howard, further debate. Councillor Strunk?
Yes, I just want to briefly talk about the Brisbane Festival. And, and the, the chair has said that, yeah, that we had all wards receive the booklet program, which was really good. The only, the only thing, well, my team and I sat down just to sort of find out where, where something was happening in our own ward. It was, some of it was mentioned in that booklet, and others, we, we had to go, of course, to the, to the website. And the website for the Brisbane Festival is, to try to find the information that we want was a bit complicated. It took us a while to drill down and to actually find what we needed to know about the dance hall workshops and things like that, that were actually happening in two venues in my ward. And the, the person navigating that website is really good at websites. And, and she even had a number of, it took a number of minutes to try to navigate and to try to find. And we knew what we were looking for. So I don't know how easy it is for others who may not, may not have that information in their head. The other thing I wanted to make comment was, was, yeah, we had two workshops and, and the take-up was really good from, you know, from, from school students, they're up taking these. And it should be a nice performance on the, at the end of that, at the end of those workshop. But I don't know how the general public, other than their friends and relatives, that they'll tell to come along to the performance, how others were really going to know, or whether or not there's enough space for others to come along and take a part in, in watching the performances. Which leads me to the issue in regards to some of those headline performances that are actually happening probably within a kilometre or two kilometres of, of the chamber here tonight, in, in those venues that we, we go, we go to on a regular basis over a period of a year, whether it be QPAC or, or Powerhouse or one of those. Now, really, if, I think the Brisbane Festival organisers should have a look at those venues that are in the suburbs, that quite frankly, in some cases are every bit as good a quality venues. They may not be able to fit thousands of people in the, in the performance arenas. But I, I just have a look at one of the venues out my way, which I know that councillor Howard's been to on a number of occasions, and that's at St John, which holds 650 people, really comfortable seats, which is very important. And, and all the technical apparatus is needed to put on a first class performance by professionals. All right. We have BPAC that comes out every year, spends 10 days there, doing, doing workshops with the big gala performance at the end. So we have performing arts centres in a lot of the schools. One that was just built in the last couple of years was at Forest Lake High School as well. And I know that there's a lot around the suburbs. And we really should maybe decentralise Brisbane Festival and try to get more and more out into the suburbs. Because there's no point in, you know, maybe a couple of areas in the, in the CBD, in the surrounding areas, holding those headline performances or those very professional performances. And people have, from the, from the 190 suburbs that make up Brisbane have to traipse in and, and, and take, and, and take part in watching those performances. So I just think we should decentralise a bit more. I think we started that during COVID. And I think it was, you know, it was a by-product of COVID. And I think it really, I think that we got really good feedback from local residents about that. And I think we should continue on with that and try to get more and more performances back into the suburbs.
Microphone on. Any further debate? I'm on now, but I don't have a green light up here. I have it down here. Councillor Howard?
Yes. Look, thank you, councillor Strunk. And we will take that on board. But Brisbane Festival, in fact, have promised to send us some, some more ward-by-ward type of information. We just haven't received that yet. And once we do, we'll send that out to, to the wards. But can I just, for, for your benefit, mention some of the 15 locations that the Brisbane Serenades will be? The Paint Factory at Yoronga, Milton Park at Milton, Bayside Park, Manly, Forshaw, Pegs Park at Maruka, Victoria Park, Barambin at Hurston, Roma Street Parklands, O'Callaghan Park, Zylmere, Sherwood and Alice, Stafford, Sunnybank, Forest Lake, Cannon Hill, Spring Hill, and West End Dance Hall. So we, they have tried very hard to take the festival to the suburbs. And they, of course, are always very willing to hear from councillors with ideas for, for next year. But I will undertake for us to send a little bit more information out to the wards so that you have specific information. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howard. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Huang, the Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 2nd August 2022, be adopted.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting...
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, I haven't changed my surname, so.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Been a while since I got to this report. It's been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of August 2022, be adopted. Councillor Huang?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair. The presentation and committee report last week was, was the net borrow, net borrowings report for the June quarter, which included an economic update from the corporate treasurer, as is usual for our first meeting for the session. As was the situation in our last report. Inflation remains a major concern both locally and globally. Inflation is expected to reach an average of 8.5% across the OECD countries in 2022, with the US and UK already experiencing inflation of 9.1%. In Brisbane, we have inflation of 7.3%, and we notice there's a number of consequences for households, businesses, and governments. We also had the bank investment report for May and June 2022, and the CFO was on hand to answer questions from the committee on these reports. I'll leave the debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Now, councillors. Councillors, I just brought to your attention that the agenda, it got things in slightly the wrong order. The next item before us should be the notified motion. The, the agenda papers say petitions next, then general business, then the notified motion. But the correct order is to go to the notified motion. And I note that councillor Sri, the move the motion, isn't with us in the chamber. The standing rules allow for this to occur when a councillor has given a notice of motion, is absent from the meeting. There are a couple of options. It could be moved by another councillor at the meeting. It can be deferred by the chair to the next meeting. Or the alternative is that the motion lapses. My, my belief is that we should defer this and put it on the agenda for the next meeting next week. Thank you. Okay, now we can move to the next item before us, which is petitions. Are there any petitions? Councillor Mackay?
I have a petition requesting a duplication of the Walter Taylor Bridge.
Thank you. Councillor Hammond?
I've got a petition on behalf of councillor Matic about, sorry, he's just come back in, about a picnic pavilion be renamed.
Thank you. Councillor Cumming?
Yes, thanks. I have a petition requesting speed limit of 40 km an hour along the Winna Manley and Loda Forshaw.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition for a request for re-vegetation rehabilitation in a block in Taragindi.
Thank you. Any further petitions? Can I, councillor Landers, may I have a motion for receipt of the petitions, please?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Cummings, Cumming, sorry, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements first required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No councillor standing. Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Mackay?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to set a bit of tradition and do a two-minute Tuesday and give a wrap-up of what's going on in the ward. So we're going to start with something a little bit closer to home and talk about the level of stress in the chamber today. And it's been very pleasing, and I thank everyone for their wonderful behaviour. I met with the Indrapili Cricket Club last week, and they're celebrating 87 years at Moor Park in Indrapili. Their oval is on a former cattle herding area. And they have put together a master plan, and they're looking to build a clubhouse. So that's going to be a longer-term plan. But great to get out there with Osman, and I wish them all the best in their venture to try and attract a female team. In Taitong Street in Indrapili, it's a bush care area managed by Habitat Brisbane and run by volunteers. Congratulations to everyone for getting in there and chopping out the cat's claw and all the other nasties. And we noticed that there was a sugar glider nesting box in there with a bit of activity, which is great to see. In Essex Road Park, also in Indrapili, the wonderful guys from City Standards were down there finishing off the last of the embellishments in the park, and that is a relocation of the bubbler. They're upgrading the old rotten one and moving it out of the kickabout space. We've put in new picnic benches, we've put in new tables, and we've planted 68 trees in that park. So it's looking really good. There's also a street library in there, a little one that's made by the men's shed, and we're looking for people to paint it. They don't need to be an artist, they just need to have some enthusiasm. Speaking of street libraries, we are building two English phone booth street libraries. One of them is going in at the Ironside Shops in Ironside, St Lucia. The other one's looking for a home. So I'm calling on local residents to suggest where they might like to see the English phone booth street library located. I did mention Ironside Shops, that upgrade's nearly complete. We're just working on a few little embellishments, such as tidying up where the gardens need to go and some of the seats.
That's two minutes, councillor Mackay, you're going to push the boundary?
That's two minutes?
You can keep going, you've got 10.
Yeah, well, it's plus, it's plus GST. So Curbside Collection starts this week in Indrapili, Chapel Hill, Victory Pocket and Tuong. And it's really good. I commend all of the locals for putting their stuff off the footpath but on the verge and keeping it nice and safe. And finally, we've got two school fairs coming up, Tuong Hands and Hearts later this month, and the Ironside Spring Fair coming up in the first weekend of September, where we will be handing out our wonderful little seed packets to encourage bee activity in pollinating our gardens. Thank you.
Thank you for your three minutes. Thank you, councillor Hammond. Further, further, further.
Councillor Hammond? Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak about a couple of my rugby league football clubs that I'm patron for, and also one of my small businesses in Marchant Ward. First of all, I'm going to talk about how proud I am to be the Brothers Rugby League Juniors patron for over 10 years. And also the Valleys, Fortitude Valleys Football Club, which is not in the valley, it's in the Grange area. And I've been patron of them for over 10 years as well. It's really difficult when these two great clubs play against each other because they're long-term rivals. Usually, I wear one club shirt at the start of a game and change at half-time to the other club. This year, I'm mixing it up. I am going to wear one of the shirts with the other ones' football socks. So I don't have to do the wardrobe change. Everyone will be happy, including both my clubs, that they will never ask me to kick off ever, ever, ever again. I practised, councillor Davis, very hard, to do a dropkick, but they made me do it on...
There's plenty of them over there.
They made me do it on one of the Ts. Is that what you call them, gentlemen? The boys did, the men did ask whether they had to play the ball off my kick, and they looked petrified. And so they should have, because all the ball did was do a couple of bounces and roll a couple of places. They're never going to ask me again, and said that they would never, ever have me play for either of their clubs. Valleys on the weekend had a supporters' function. This was a great function. Yep, go the diehards. They played Pine Rivers, and they won quite convincingly. I would like to say thank you to Jenny Walker, who again has been the president of that club, hardest-working volunteer for well over 10 years. That's for Valleys. Terry O'Regan, I would like to thank you from Brothers for being that, one of the hardest, again, working club presidents that we've had. And you've been there for over four. Let's hope someone lets you retire next year, Terry, but you're way too good. That's half the problem. So at the Valleys' function on the weekend, I was told of this very young country boy who only had one radio station when he was growing up in the early 70s, or 1970, I think the, the young kid actually said. But we won't kind of say it was any longer or whatever, because we don't want to give this gentleman's age up. But he fell in love with Valleys, because Valleys was such a prominent club back then, and still is. They've got a fantastic women's team, and I think, believe they've been undefeated this season. So go the women, go the diehards. When I was at the club on the weekend, I mentioned this young man who fell in love with Valleys, always has, still loyal to the Valleys. So I'd like to make this young man's dream come true and make him an honourable north sider by handing the Valleys Die Hard shirt to no other but to councillor Greg Adaman. I would also likely, just briefly, give a shout-out to one of my small businesses. If you're looking for a brewery, gentlemen and ladies, sorry, come to Marchant Ward, because not only do we have Happy Valley Brewery, which is open, I took my, my two favourite Niels, my dad and my husband, there for lunch on the weekend. I was their dutiful driver. They loved it. They tried all the beers. Be careful, they do have a beer that's 16.5%. So I would recommend probably not sampling that one too much. But we're also going to have the Flat Lizard opening up soon. They're both in the same area, in the little industrial area. So come on, you've got live music, sit down, have a glass of beer, or like me, a glass of water, and enjoy the afternoon. Thank you very much.
Any further general business? Councillor Timmy?
Just briefly, Chair. I want to endorse what councillor Hammond said. I often do an incursion into her ward and spend a Sunday afternoon. Happy Valleys, it's, it's a good spot. And Shane does do brew, a very, very good brew.
Enough free plugs. Thank you all. Any further general business? No further general business? With the, I declare the meeting closed, and thank you for your family-friendly hours.